Just want to confirm you can hear me, it's Alan.
Yeah, you can hear him.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna get started. Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the New Canaan Planning and zoning Commission for November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. My name is Kristen Nielsen, I am sitting in this evening for Dan Radman, who is our chairman, but he is away and on Zoom this evening, so it's a little hard to manage. Meeting from a distance, but he is here with us. Regarding the format for tonight's meeting, it's a hybrid meeting as all of our meetings have been since COVID, that means we will have some commissioners on Zoom. As well as some applicants and members of the public also attending on Zoom. We will break the meeting into three sections. First on the agenda are the public hearing items, for each we will read the public notice and the record, and then we will ask participants or applicants to present their application. Commissioner members will ask questions during after the presentation, and then afterwards we will take comments from members of the public. If you wish to speak during the public comment period, please raise your hand in either your actual hand or your virtual hand if you're on Zoom and wait to be recognized. We will first call on those in the room, followed by those on Zoom. When it is your turn to speak, please be sure to give us your name and address and speak directly to the commissioners. Not to the applicant or other members of the public. And once everyone has had a full opportunity to speak and have their questions answered, we will decide if it's appropriate to close the hearing. If we close the hearing, you may deliberate on the application during the public meeting portion of the meeting. So that's what the second part of the meeting is, is the public meeting. During that, we will deliberate on post applications and administrative matters, and no public comment will be taken during that portion of the meeting. For those on Zoom and in the room, tonight there are a couple of items that are on our agenda that will not be heard, so I want to give you a chance to save yourself a couple hours of your time. The first is item one, the subdivision modification on pasture lanes, about seventy-eight and ninety-two Pasture Lane is not being heard this evening. Additionally, we're not hearing items four and five on our agenda, which are the eight-twenty-four review and the site plan application for the sign at eleven Farm Road, which is the farm and cellar intersection. So just so everyone knows, we're not hearing those. Let's go ahead and do the roll call. Dan Radman?
I'm here.
Kristen Nielsen, here. Pat Turner?
Here.
John Chris?
Here.
Eric Cassinat?
Here.
Matt Engel?
Here.
Chris Herring?
Here.
Paul Knag?
Here.
Alan Swirbo?
Here.
All right, Tom Benton is absent, and Christina Larson?
Here.
Oh, she's on it? Yeah, she's on. Okay, sorry, we can only see port screen, so. All right, Christina is here. Thank you, Christina, for inviting us. So we will just go ahead with the members, the regular members who are seated. We won't speak any alternates. We may have some recusals during applications, but we still have a bar, that's fine. All right, so this evening we're gonna start with item two on the agenda.
Chris, we just have to add Grace Farms.
I have nothing.
You have to vote on, add that to add administrative action, second.
Okay. So I guess before we hear nineteen Oldstead Lane, we're going to vote to add to your Grace Farms winter schedule to item ten, which is administrative actions. Can I get a motion?
So good.
Okay. Mr. Radman, do you agree to add it?
Agreed. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Cassinat?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Knag?
Yeah.
Mr. Swirbo?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
And then for Pasture Lane, that was withdrawn, so you need to read the full item into the record and then just say it's withdrawn.
Okay. Okay, so item number one on the agenda, which we're not hearing, but I will read and say that it's withdrawn, is seventy-eight and ninety-two Pasture Lane. Upon application of David J. Rucci, Lampert, Tui, and Rucci LLC authorized agent for special properties for LLC owners to modify condition eight of the subdivision approved on August twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety-seven, to allow for lots formerly known as parcels number two thirty-sixth and parcel number two thirty-seven to be served severed in title without relocating the existing driveway as currently required. That item is withdrawn. So moving on, item number two, nineteen Oldstead Court. Upon application of Victor Pace Solerick, BKS Architects authorized agent for Virginia and Max Edelman owners for special permit approval of section three point four point C point one to allow an eighteen foot by twenty-four foot detached garage located within a front yard setback in the D residence zone at nineteen Oldstead Court, map and block eighty-one, lot six seventeen. Does anyone need to re-please themselves for this application?
I need to re-please myself. I'm in a bud.
Okay.
But you should leave.
All right, with that, who do we have here this evening?
Good evening, my name is Victor Solerick, BKS Architects.
There's no need to, we're just gonna let her watch for a second, be taken. All right, sorry.
I am the authorized agent for Max and Virginia Edelman. To, the proposal is to allow a one-car garage, eighteen by twenty-four, to be built in front of the main residence. It is, I believe technically, within the side yard, outside the side yard center, but it's in front of the house. And the reason for this proposal is that the existing residence did have a one-car garage, but it's extremely small and really not functional. And they didn't allow to reasonably use, so all the vehicles are actually parked currently in the location where the property is located. So we're proposing to provide a space that will be protected for the vehicles and perhaps some additional storage. Because the existing residence has a very small basement, but they join it, no storage reasonably accessible. The house is currently undergoing an addition. It is being framed as we speak, and the addition is actually taking over the property of the existing garage. But the whole plan was from get-go to provide more living space within the existing residence and provide indoor parking in a space that is currently in progress. It's a single-story structure, you get to say. The elevations are included. And it's a one-car garage door facing the development core policy. By the way, the shape of the property is one of the problems that we had because of the curvature of the front yard prevents us from putting the garage further to the side where it would be preferable under normal conditions.
Well, and is that also true, I've tried to measure on our GIS, it appears that the entire lot is within a hundred and fifty feet of the road, so. There would really be no way for you to have anything on this property, let alone a detached garage that we without
Unless it's in the back there. Which is just
Oh, behind the house.
All it needs to be, it just needs to be equal or
Yeah, so I think you have a real shape of the lot, if that is possible.
It would, by the way, it would require extension into the side yard center.
Okay, so you mean
Because, again, the center side to the house, so bumping left or right would necessitate various for that. And then there's also grading, some drainage behind the property that complicates things for
Commissioners, do we have questions for this applicant?
See, can you just expand on that? What would be, if you were to just per se mark and put it to the left of the current garage and just have the same eighteen by twenty-five foot deep? I guess that's a little long, yeah, eighteen by twenty-five, what would the impingement into the side yard setback be?
Well, the, the existing line of the house, the where it ends now, is twenty-seven point three feet to the property line. Where twenty-five foot center is required, so almost the entire, let's say fifteen feet out of the eighteen-foot garage would be in the side yard setback.
Accessory took your side yard setback, though, for the residence zone, so but it's still gonna be able to make that.
Well, no, you wouldn't, and if it was attached, then it could be ten feet away from the, from the house, right? So you're pushing it further into the side yard, and by the time, if it's easier, I can
Sorry, a question, Commissioner Chris, you mentioned point four of your submission, said proposed structure fits into the site. On this site, in the neighborhood and scale and use and design, you can go to a little more detail on the design features of this and some of the materials, and particularly those materials, these are the dwelling itself.
Sure, should I first address the side yard question?
Yeah, can we just, I just wanna understand kind of the relative impingement.
Could you use the mouse?
Yes. Sure, so this is the existing line of garage, or the edge of the house that exists. And you can see that this dimension to the property line is the twenty-seven feet change. So putting a structure parallel with the house the back corner of the, let's say, fifteen or eighteen-foot line structure would be all the way here, attached to the side of the house.
Okay, so you're saying that the dotted line there is the building envelope?
This is the building envelope, correct.
And then okay, but the side yard setback would be only a subset of that, because I see on the upper right you have another dotted line that's only five or so feet.
Eight feet.
That's eight feet, and then on the other side, by the proposed garage, you also have an eight-foot line.
So that is the rear property line, just to clarify, the, he's saying it's twenty-seven feet, that, that's considered your rear, so that has a different principal structure setback than your side property line, so that's why it's closer on those two versus the back.
Okay, because this property has two backs.
Right.
Yeah, two backs besides, because it's got a weird shape. So, you know, to put it here, actually, it would not be in the side yard, it would be rear.
No, when I looked at it on Google Earth, I didn't have a chance to walk to drive by, is there a fence all along the front of the house?
There is a fence that actually is here. That, I'm sorry, this is the line. Yeah. This, this is the fence right here, that, like, actually, the driver of the neighbor. That's, that's a perfect corner of the property.
Is that, is that an easement, or is that just sort of current condition?
I think there is a, it says, and there is a non-exclusive driveway easement there. Thank you, sir. So I assume that it's actually recorded, is that?
This is Commissioner Radman, Chairman Radman. Question for the applicant on the size of this garage, this is intended to be a two-car garage, is that right?
No, it's only eighteen feet wide, so it's technically a one-car garage with some storage on the side for all owners and such.
But the
I'm sorry?
The existing garage that's part of the house, that's now gonna be repurposed as part of the house, not, no longer a garage, right?
That's correct.
Your questions?
I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if you're already at eighteen feet on the width. Would it be more beneficial to, and I don't know if we're into a coverage number here, Sarah, but would it be more beneficial to make it a two-car garage and more useful to the to the user?
It's, it's a good point, and we had discussed it with the customers, with the applicant or the owners. The concern was the size of it and proximity to the neighbor's property, to the house.
Yep.
It is sort of a compromise, admittedly. One garage, one car garage is kind of I don't wanna say useless, but, you know, today, everybody has other things that we need to store, they have two little children, they have all kinds of strollers and toys and things, so they need to store them somewhere, and, you know, ideally, they would also put a car in there. So it is a, it is a one-car garage. The garage door, the proposed garage door, it's twelve feet wide. So it's not, you know, nine-foot typical garage door, it's slightly oversized. Nevertheless, the intention is that a one-car can access in-out for all the small equipment and toys. It is a single-story structure, the exterior treatment is same as the house, it's a cedar shingle. As for chisel roofing, to match the house, and white train, sort of very similar vernacular to the house.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to ask, just to make sure we were understanding the scope of the project correctly.
Definitely.
You answered my question.
Are we on coverage, Sarah?
Um, no, it's about a I think they still have a thousand square meters covered, pretty good, so you can say something, it's good, you're available.
There's no water going into the structure for bathroom, then?
No.
It's just a
It'd be electric, not right, the only way to let it go there.
Neighbors?
We received the mailing of comments from neighbors.
Any exterior lighting? Plan?
That's a good question. There will be a lantern or wall, wall sconce on the side of the garage doors, actually shown on the elevation, but we always, you will cut out light fixture that directs the light to the ground from the horizontal plane.
Oh, on either side, okay. Commissioner, would they be able to start complying, these two lights, like the footlights and the side of the garage? Okay. Will there be a light by the, displayed by the doorway as well?
There would be a light actually on the porch of the house, which is gonna be in the ceiling, so there'd be enough light to illuminate the the path.
If I'm looking at garage north elevation, there seems to be a light, giving advice, really. But I assume there's a light.
Well, yes, you're right. That's same, sort of, same, same line that will be in the front, so we'll get three light fixtures.
Start, start, start compliant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioners, anything else? Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak on this application? If they're on Zoom or in the room, feel free to raise your hand.
So I do just wanna add that I had thought of this with the applicant three weeks ago, that because they are putting addition on the main house, and with the proposal of the structure that does trigger the town's drainage policy, and the town has not received a drainage analysis yet. So if the commission were to look favorably on this application, I do recommend just having some sort of condition, and this is only, you know, approved with the assumption that the drainage analysis will be satisfied with the town being there.
I met with the engineer, we have started the process of the some drainage analysis, but well aware that this is gonna be taken care of, that we're working on it, and that will give us
And for clarification, they, they wouldn't be able to get a building from it for the structure without the drainage analysis, and it's not, have anything.
Commissioners, are we feeling like we can place this application?
Yes.
Is anyone considering any conditions we wanna discuss and run past the applicant before we place the application, do you think?
The only condition I would have is the one that planning officer Kerry mentioned.
Okay.
That would be it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is item number three. So the one thirteen Hemlockville Road, on application of David J. Rucci, Lampert, Tui, and Rucci LLC authorized agent for Michael and Allison Reese owners for a special permit modification in the section three point three point C point one point A. To modify the special permit approval of June twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, to allow for two underground showroom spaces in the main garage. The two new spaces will result in an increase of vehicle spaces on the property from the approved six to eight, in the two-acre zone at one thirteen Hemlockville Road, map thirty-three, block thirty-two, lot twenty-nine. Anyone need to raise your hand to talk on this application? All right, we are good, Mr. Rucci, whenever you're ready. Yeah. Can I get a follow-up?
Right, one.
Mr. Chris, do you have any friends? Those guys don't make you friends.
I got a lot of friends, I think they will all go on last Monday.
Yes. Good evening, David, which I'm representing, Michael and Allison Reese, especially with their property at one thirteen Hemlockville. And many of you may remember this particular activity when it came back in June, which was just for a cheap, tight, free part of the ride on the property. Probably remember the most part about this was we had an issue with the neighbor in the front, who was dealing with an easement, for a certain kind of mind, we had some more some more screening in, we would generate around, et cetera. And at that time, we had asked for garage spaces of more than five on the property, as for three point three to three point one, and we ended up getting approval for six. Undenied to the applicant or the applicant's representative, we literally should have asked for more spaces, because they have in their garage the existing garage on the property, not the detached garage, a lift, which essentially takes it down to the basement of the property where there's two more spaces. And they didn't realize that since you weren't increasing the footprint, that you would have to comply with essentially asking for more garage space. So that's why we're here today, so when the application went in front, I'm sorry, when the building permit went in front of the planning zoning, they realized immediately that, in fact, there's two extra faces below the garage based on the lift, and that's what we now need eight spaces instead of six that were already approved. So we're asking for modification of that permit, still essentially asking a little bit of people to think that sit below the, the current garage.
Mr. Rucci, just to be clear, it's the detached garage or the attached?
No, it's the attached garage, right here. Right here. So here, here's the detached garage, obviously, is over here. This is for the attached garage, so there's no additional footprint or anything like that happening, but in fact, it is considered two more spaces, because you're able to put the vehicle below the garage itself. So here's just kind of an overall planting plan of the property. And here's a picture of the house right now, under construction, and you can see that this is where the three garage spaces are today. Okay, so there's obviously nothing happening other than underneath this particular space. I do have Peter Nielsen from the, from the builder who's here, who may explain more about kind of how this is at work. I know I have a lot of people on this commission who are very familiar with storing cars and showrooms and lifts, so you're probably gonna know much more than I do about it, so I will try to explain what I know. So here's, I turned to the front of the garage, and then here's the space right here, that's below the garage. It ends here, so you access it from the basement, coming through here, and then you have about eleven hundred square feet of space here for the two cars, for the two spots, one, two here, and then the lift is here. And the lift actually comes down and rotates, so the time it gets to the basement, it can rotate to put these two cars in this showroom spot here. There's just a little bit larger screen here, once again, here's the door in the basement that gets into the showroom. And then here's the lift path that comes down, and then, as I said, it rotates to give you these two spaces here and here.
I don't get it.
You don't get it? No?
All right. What, like, what's rotating and?
So this space right here is what's coming down from upstairs, from the on-grade three-car garage.
Okay.
Okay, so it gives a spot comes down into this particular, into here, and then it rotates so that you can put a car here and here. So these are the two spaces that you actually have underneath.
Right, so basically, this square rotates, you can add two more cars.
Correct, so here's sort of the way the car, the lift will come up and down, I just, there's like three different pictures of how this works. And then, but instead of, this below here is gonna be your basement, right?
How deep is the basement, sorry? Below, the level of the
I'm gonna ask Peter Nielsen to comment on exactly the specifications of the actual garage itself. Okay, so Peter, can you just talk to the fact that how deep, how far below the lift will go into the basement?
Yes, hi, this is Peter Nissen, San Francisco, Coastal Luxury Homes. The basement is about eleven foot, three inches, and the lift descends into a pit that is about thirty inches below the basement slab. That's where the mechanicals sit underneath, and then the, the platform is flush with the, with the basement slab, and then there's a turntable on the lift that rotates ninety degrees. And then the car, the vehicle's able to drive off of the lift.
So it's a, it's a four-post lift, the way you've shown it in these images? And then there's an additional turntable on top?
No, so the, the these images come from the manufacturer's website, and what you're looking at is there's the turntable that the vehicle goes on, and then there's a top piece that sits eight foot above, that rides with the turntable, so the the top platform is always eight foot higher, and then when the sorry, not eight feet, it's, it's it's it sits where, when the car is all the way down in the basement, the top platform piece closes the opening in the garage slab above.
Let's start with Commissioner Chris again, so there is a slab where the car goes to go up and down, and then above it is essentially another slab with a roof. And when you park it in the basement, the roof essentially will make the main garage flood, a flood floor, is that what I'm hearing?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And, and one other thing to note here is that even though there's a three-car garage, one of the garage pieces actually is this lift itself. So you're not supposed to keep an actual car on the lift, whether it's on the inside or the top of the lift, so even though there's actually space for three in the, in the garage, but you're not really gonna be able to use that garage bay other than to move the car up and down in it. So even though it's a three-car bay, one of the bays is actually just for the lift itself.
Also, Commissioner Chris, I would assume that in order to put what is essentially an elevator has to have a special permit from the state or so forth, has that been investigated, and are there issues we should be aware of?
I can let Mr. Nissen answer that question.
Yeah, there, there's no state inspection with regards to this vehicle lift, it's not a I, I don't believe it falls within, under the same regulations as a residential elevator would. I, I don't believe it falls within, under the same regulations as a residential elevator would. Um, but this is installed by a certified and licensed elevator mechanic. Um, and there, there's a separate building permit that would be um. Filed for this lift. Under the main permit of the house.
So I may be, I'll admit my, you know, something on the detail, but my understanding is that if you have a. For example, a movable stage in a, in a theater, if you have uh, any kind of elevator. There's a necessity for some sort of licensing that may only be for a commercial application. As opposed to a residence, private residence, but um, I certainly would want to be sure that anything, maybe that's a state issue. Has been dealt with uh, property for this installation, review my question.
And any, if, if the uh commissioner were um, you know, in a position to approve this application, that certainly would be a condition to that. Approval that we would get the appropriate state um licensing provided to the, to the, to the town planner.
So I would just clarify, I don't know how realistic of a condition that is because this was, my understanding is this has been installed already in that. There were some miscommunications of what was approved plans by the building department and not, so it's even as a. After the backer wind is what we call it, so. Providing proof that there was the proper inspection may be difficult since it was already installed. So I would not recommend having that condition.
This is Commissioner Nissen. I, I, I question this though. I mean, if there's a need for state inspection regarding the installation stage. It should be fulfilled. Uh, I also have a separate question, I guess, for Mr. Nissenson about his statement, but. In effect, all of this cost is only creating one additional parking space, am I correct? It creates two. Two, but if I understand correctly, you can't park a vehicle on this um, upper uh, platform.
Well, you can if the platform is in the closed position, in the lowered position, then you would have a, a flush floor on the ground level.
That's different from what was said earlier. So, so Commissioner Nissen, could you clarify that?
Yeah, I um, I, I need to confirm the specifications of that upper platform. Um, but. Uh, I, I can't confirm if, if a vehicle can be parked in that upper platform.
Basically, this is Commissioner, uh, could you just uh, outline uh. What exactly is being done with all these cars in these garages? So for, for this particular, there's a showroom down below, which has the, the showroom car, two cars that, that the applicant has for showroom. The uh, three car garage is actually really for their residents' cars or the residents handed to garage base here.
Or they're selling, they're selling these cars.
No, they just have. Oh, I just mean in the sense it's their own personal showroom. They have a collector bar.
A collection room, right?
Yeah. Alright, so just to clarify, um, Rucci. This is already. It's been installed. Right, it's done. Correct, it was installed and it was not the applicant, well, not even applicant, the, the uh. The contractor did not realize that he needed to, that the two state that they were creating underneath was actually subject to an additional special permit. Because they weren't expanding it, but then.
And may I clarify that it's installed in the sense that it's put in place? Like the crane came and placed it in the opening, but it's not actually, the electrical hasn't been connected. The mechanicals haven't been finished. It's kind of propped up in position. Um, so we wanted to go through this process before we moved forward at all. Um, and continued with the installation.
I would assume uh, uh, if Rucci, that we, your building inspector and others have looked at the hole that had to be dug to put the mechanicals in and. Uh, expect inspected the mechanical, at least as far as they're uh, in place and everything, no issues with any of that.
I would have that to listen about that. I, this only came to me after they realized they needed another special permit, so.
Yes, we have had all required inspections from the Canadian Building Department, including the area for this pit and lift.
Thank you, sir.
I do want to clarify that the building department, my understanding is, are required that there be submitted because. They require that revision to be submitted where it came to our attention that the lift was installed, um, because. They're gonna, it sounded like the client wanted some things, so they changed the plans around and there was some miscommunication of that, the building department. We need to review the changes that were um. Proposed and constructed.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think that when you look at three point three C one. Um, in and of itself, you know, they talked a lot about a large attached garage being able to actively, you know, hold more vehicles. I can see how you can look at that and not necessarily think to yourself that something that was below grade may. Trigger the additional spaces. Um, I mean, I know that, but I wouldn't necessarily think that the builder or anyone else may know that just by reading that particular section. Um, but nonetheless, it's not as if we're acting for something that's being expanded to a five or six car garage. That's attached and it's something that's there underneath, so it's not really increasing the footprint in any way, shape or form. Um, we do have a very large lot here, it's like we're uh, you know, to, to um. The double lot essentially in the zone, it's got two hundred units in it, uh, to the two acre zone and it's over uh, four point, whatever it is, so. Um. Four point nine acres in two acre zone, uh, sits way back on the property. Um, I don't believe this is going to have any effect on any of the neighboring properties, we haven't heard from any of the neighbors. Uh, at all on this second modification uh, that we requested. And for the most part, these cars are going to be really used as a showroom, you know, within this particular building in itself. Um, there's no uh, drainage in the floor, there's no mechanical work being done on this particular property. Um, and you know, we're requesting that uh, modify the original permit that we received. To add these additional, um, uh, I think you're going from stick hitting cars on the property. Um, and I don't, I don't have much else, so we're too many other questions. Different. The original. The original permit was for three in the attached, three in the detached, correct? And now it's three in the detached, five in the attached. Only because two of those vehicles can be brought down, rotated, moved off of the lift. Correct. It could even be an extra one left on the list. Well, we're actually counting the three on the top. So we're, we're actually counting that top space in our request, not the, the third potential spot. Down, downstairs. So when we were approved initially, we were at six, we were at the three car garage.
I got that.
And then we were at the detached, right? So we had three and three. Now this lift sits in one of those three car bays. Yes, so we have that and we're looking for the two below. That's the eight. So there's no more, there's no more, there's not nine, is all.
You could put, well, Mr. Nissen said, you could have one on the top of the lift.
But that's our.
And one on the bottom.
But that's already.
Didn't count the one on the bottom.
No, you can't have one on the bottom of the lift.
You can't because you rotated two cars off of it, so I mean, both in spots.
Those two cars are off.
Yep.
Okay, then you have the lift area, that can only have one car in.
On the top.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm saying, so you have the three, six, and then the two below is eight. Got. My understanding initially from this was that you couldn't actually store a car on the lift. I was the one who said that, not Mr. Nissen. That was my understanding of it, but he's saying that potentially you could store one there. But that's.
No, I'm sorry, I don't believe that you can store one on top of the platform that closes the opening in the slab uh, at the garage level. I believe that is just a, a closure for safety purposes, but it is not intended to park a vehicle on.
The brand of the manufacturer? Do you want to get one? I'm curious. I'm, I'm looking at a phantom park, subterranean parking lot. I'm just curious, is that really? Uh, Mr. Nissen, what's the brand?
This is a Visari. Um, I believe it's a German manufactured lift called V I S A R I, I believe.
Uh, Mr. Radman, did you, we started to speak on Zoom, I want to make sure you have a chance to see if you have something you wanted to ask.
Yeah, the, the other two remaining spots in the main garage that are not part of this bay. Will those two spots have any additional vehicle lifts on grade stacking?
No.
What's the, what's, what's the height of the ceiling in the main garage?
Commissioner, what's the height of the ceiling in the main garage?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I, I was having trouble unmuting. Um, I'd have to go back to the drawings, but I believe it's around uh, eleven foot six.
So theoretically, you could stack additional cars in the other two bays.
If we had a lift, I mean, we still have to go get permission to put another lift in. In order to.
This, this is Commissioner Turner. Um. You know, if the commissioners feel that um, this is something we can approve. We can always put a condition in, in cap it at eight cars regardless of where they put them.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
Uh, can I ask a question, Commissioner Wardler?
Yep.
Very hard to meet here. Are you recognizing me?
Yes.
Okay. So here's a question for the owner and contractor. Um, you have the option to build a three car garage. Versus a two car garage with a lift, which option would you uh, elect?
Sorry, I'm, I'm the, I, I'm a project manager for, and, and I uh, work with the general contractor Coastal Luxury Homes. So I, you know, I'm, I'm able to answer questions regarding the specifics about the construction on site, but I, I, you know, I don't think I'm able to answer that question.
No, we don't have a representative of the owner who could, actually, other than yourself, who could actually answer that.
Other than David Rucci, it's just, uh, I, that's correct.
Well, David Rucci, would, would you want to uh, chime in on that?
I mean, the only, the only answer I could have for that is, is the only answer that I would have to ask specific questions for loads, just the fact that. This is what they propose, so my assumption is this is what they would want to have built at the time, I mean, they're spending. Um, obviously, a large sum of money on this particular project. Um, on this lot, and it's a large lot, and I think that they, you know, they have a, a three car garage and they wanted a showroom for their, the cars that they own. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming this is the best, this, this is what they proposed and this is how they wanted to move forward. I don't have an answer to whether they do two or three. I mean, I would say most of the, the homes um, being built today all have three car garages. Um, obviously this has detached as well, but this is also a very large piece of property, so my bet is you always go with three cars garage.
Uh, let me try and ask the question, and, and I'm not trying to uh, assume anything, I'm just trying to suss this out of my own mind. Uh, you showed a very compelling picture of a lift that uh, brings cars into a showroom type space in the basement. That wasn't even in the basement, that was a windowed space. Uh, and that, that looked very compelling to me actually. But bringing an extra car into what is literally a basement parking space doesn't seem to suggest showroom to me. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's another motivation.
No, I mean, the motivation is for them to have their showrooms, they can access from their basement.
It is a walkout basement with a very large glass wall.
Um, so here's sort of a picture of the, the basement plan. And you can see you can walk out through this and there's a glass wall here, so it, it sort of shows the um. The car from inside, the interior of the basement as well.
Okay, can I see that? I don't see, seem to see it on my screen. I'm working remotely, unfortunately.
Um, I, I can say.
Can see a very, a small plan of this. Okay, where the, where the arrow is, that's a window?
That, is that better?
Yeah, that's better. So the, the arrow or to, to the right of the uh, plan, that's a large window?
The right of the plan.
No, I think that.
Yeah, where the arrow.
Yeah, the windows are in here, so you can walk out here and, and see into the basement and see into this space. So.
I can clarify a bit further. This is Peter Nissenson. Um, what you're looking at is a glass wall, so there, that is, that will be a gym. Um, adjacent to the car showroom and what you're referring to the, the arrow, that's a double glass door. Uh, opening into the car showroom. So you'll be able to see through those doors and then there will be some fixed uh, glass panels on either side of the door. And you'll be able to be in the gym and also in the hall. Uh, by the back stair leading to that area of the house, uh, you'll be able to look through and into the car showroom.
And all, all of this will be below grade with no, um, no daylight coming through, correct? In this area.
That is correct.
Right.
Well, well then, well, let me, let me further clarify this, because what you just described seems to make sense to me. But now you're saying it's all below grade without an external window. That's so the air, the, where the arrow is in the current plan, that's not an exterior window.
No, the arrow there is just referring to the extent of the, of the outside wall of the house.
This is the wall of the house? And this is, this is where you come in?
We're, we're looking at the foundation plan.
Right.
Okay. So when you come in, you're going into what, what, what is a gym that has internal glass windows into the car showroom?
Correct.
Okay, other than that, there are no other windows.
Right, well, it's, it's all below grade, so there, there's no windows anywhere. The, the windows in the interior are from. Uh, an interior room to an interior room, so it's just a glass.
Okay, it's a glass partition. They're, they're really not what we would think of as the exterior windows. So, so in other words, the, the, the showroom now has potentially two cars in it with a gym adjacent to it divided by glass.
Correct.
Yeah, it's essentially, it's essentially going to be a glorified man cave.
Yeah, now, now, no, no, that starts to make sense to me. Uh, um, in terms of that expenditure versus a three car garage.
Hmm, do lots and then look at the cars, is that the best part of that?
Go ahead and start.
Um, uh, uh, I. It's usually not our place to ask all these questions about licensing of, of, uh. But I, I have to bring up a point, that there was a similar house with a similar car collection in Darien. Probably two years ago, three years ago, one of the cars um, caught fire. And the transmission oils, motor oils and all that created a huge amount of smoke. And filled the house and basically many cars were destroyed and the house. Uh, and the smoke got into every crevice of the house and pretty much destroyed the house. And so I take it very seriously and I don't even know how to form this question, but I, I, I'm not comfortable with the answers I got. Uh, given that we originally approved this three car garage and I get that. And now we're taking cars into the basement, we're rotating them and then moving them into the basement space. And we've asked this very simple question, are there licensing requirements, are there additional safety requirements? And the answer was, we don't know. And um, I find that surprising. I guess it's not a question for this commission. And I can within easy conscious, um, you know, approve or, you know, vote, vote on this issue of a permit after the fact, but. But I am concerned with that the safety questions have really not been answered.
Well, I can provide further clarification regarding that. Um, if I may. Again, this is Peter Nissenson. Um. The glass partition that we discussed that separates the car showroom from the gym will be a fire rated glass partition. Uh, with a one hour fire rating and uh, any ductwork penetrations will have a fire damper. Um, in addition to all required fire ratings, like you would separate a garage from the main residence. So essentially, this will be a part of the garage above and completely separated with a one hour fire rating. From the main house.
Is there, is there a sprinkler system in the house?
There is no sprinkler system.
Okay.
The incident in Darien occurred because the fire rated doors were all there, but one of them was left open. So that people could go through it and could hear from one space to the other space, you know, the phone rang and stuff. So they, they get compromised, these fire heated doors. Sometimes they get left open. So uh, the fact that there is a sprinkler system and we have cars being stored in the basement, you know. I, I, I just think the question has to get answered a little bit better.
Depending on that uh, Commissioner Engel, we, this commission has discussed some of the uh. Safety issues with battery powered cars too, which are very difficult to put out those fires, so. And whether that exacerbates the situation or not. But the issue of um, of safety for subterranean stored. uh, petrol chemicals, in effect, which would happen to these vehicles, is certainly an issue, uh, I would share your concern on.
So do you wanna clarify that, you know, this is really an issue that the building department will have to manage, and this is a new house, so they, if it doesn't meet code and there are certain safety issues, they won't get CO and they won't, you know, be able to get insurance on the house or anything, like that, so there won't, at the end of the day, there won't be any liability on the town, and then, you know, any further risk that's assumed, there's, you know, like, with the property owner. So, you know, there is, there is that, this review doesn't end with this approval, it's on the way.
I mean, even, even though we occasionally weigh in and, and tiptoe into the territory of, certain other code compliance, like ADA compliance and, fire classifications, it's really not the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it is the building, building department and the building inspector that is responsible for, for reviewing, and ensuring that it is in full compliance with any fire ratings that are required, any supplemental sprinkler ratings, um, there, there could be a whole host of things they might require in this kind of application, but it's, it's not something we can require.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that, there, uh, I don't think fire rating is an issue here, because the building department will and should take care of it. And it's not uncommon to have, uh, even in eighteen story buildings in New York, to have your own private garage within your, uh, floor, that you own within the building itself, with a private elevator. So, um, it, it's not an uncommon issue, it has to be handled properly, and as you said, Dan, it's not our purview.
And to be fair, there are a number of houses here in town that already have this type of a, R solution in their basements, uh, to a, to varying scales, so. And honestly, as a recommendation to Mr. Nissenson and Mr. Rucci to convey to your client, I would, I would venture to guess that, if they are a serious car collector, which obviously, given the extent to which they're going to, for a gallery and curating space of these vehicles, you know, supplemental fire suppression system for these areas, it's probably a smart idea.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
All right, commissioners, are we good with questions, can we open it up to the public? All right, do we have anyone from the public this evening that would like to speak on one thirteen Hameloff Hill Road? Um, commissioners, are we comfortable closing this application, and if so, are there any conditions that we want to discuss, or the applicant can still comment?
Commissioner Chris, I would just reiterate that the issue of licensing of the lift should be investigated. In my understanding, it may be different from a private home than a commercial application, but, you know, dome waiters, movable stations, uh, elevators all be licensed by the state, this may be different than the private home, but I just like to be sure that the, uh, anything that needs to be sorted out, that state will be sorted out.
I heard a suggestion about capping the number of cars being stored on the properties, and there's a problem about that.
Not me.
Uh, a question, and this is Commissioner Castman, the, the existing cap is eight, correct? And, and so, or will, will become a presumably anything over that and require some sort of a special permit application? Right, so, so I'm.
Have additional garage.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, no, just the way you phrase the question made me, yeah, yeah, we're adding now, effectively added two. So we're at eight, which is probably at the upper limit for residential.
Right. Yeah, I think it would be refunded for us to cap it, that's what applications for. All right, um, well then, this application is closed. All right, now we're moving into the regular meeting, section of this meeting, as I said at the beginning, we are not hearing items, four and five, which are raised to the sign at the intersection of Palmer and Tom Avenue. Sarah, I do not have to read those.
No.
Um, they're just being.
We open.
Okay. So that brings us item six on the agenda, um, Sarah, I believe this one is two seventy-two Elm Street?
Yeah.
Okay, this list on the agenda is seventy-two Elm Street. Yeah, I've seen it before, so I will read it as two seventy-two Elm Street, so items mixed, two seventy-two Elm Street, upon application of Frank Russo, authorized agent for VMI Incorporated, orders for a site plan, we will pursue it to section four point three point three point ten, to allow new car dealerships, including a motor vehicle repair garage and sale of used cars, used car, provided that such repair garage and or sale of used cars is clearly accessory and incidental to the principal use in the business A zone, at two seventy-two Elm Street, Matt Al Block sixteen, lot eighty-nine. Um, commissioners, just a reminder, as we start this application, and then we have two more after them. These are site plan applications, so if the proposals do meet the regulations, uh, we must approve them. All three of them are being heard tonight, different applications, but the same reason, which is they're changing use from the existing, what had been there to what's being proposed, so that's why we're hearing these. Um, who do we have to speak on two seventy-two Elm Street?
For Wilson.
Thank you, go ahead and please explain.
So on, the existing interior. As you can see here, this is the bank as is now. The proposal, next one. It's a rough draft, the, the actual front of the building will stay completely the same. Um, a, all the interior here and the safe will be removed. Uh, the bathrooms will stay the same, heating and ventilation will stay the same, they're all fresh air. Um, a wall, like, a fireproof wall will be put here, with a fireproof rated door for access to the service floor. The utility room will be shrunk a bit because there's no more servers, um, in the building, and that's pretty much on the inside. And on the outside, this is the A two survey as built. Elm Street, facing Elm Street is the front doors right here, these will be removed for sliding doors to be installed. The sliding doors, which look like this now, similar to this, this is an earlier picture, will be changed to what looks like this. Let's go to the rear of the building. On the rear of the building where the safe is, so this is the front of Elm Street, you're coming around the back, the safe is on the backside of the building, the safe will be removed. A garage door will be installed right here. This is next to the drive-through area, does not encroach it in any way. That'll allow access, go back one. That'll allow access to the service floor of the building, separate from the front. The door will look like that. Let's go to, uh, the pictures, please. This is the inside of the showroom floor or the, uh, studio. The mural from New Canaan will stay, obviously, all this will move, the Barney carpet will be removed and tile will be installed. The, um, the actual, uh, inside will stay the same, nothing's being touched in here, uh, windows, everything stays the same. The teller side, you have teller stations that will be removed. Two charging stations will be placed here, uh, we're contemplating two, maybe just one, we may put another one up front, before electric, electric car charging. And that's really all I have.
Okay, can you, um, talk a little bit about what the plans are, what types of cars you plan on selling, um, in this building?
Okay, yes, sure, um, so right now, currently, I'm in negotiation with partnerships with new car, new car electric dealers, uh, electric manufacturers, apologize. Um, nothing is set in stone yet, but, um, I feel that I have to move forward with that. And also, plan on having, uh, consignment, um, uh, pre-owned classic cars, and conventional cars, I mean, we're still gonna focus on conventional cars, because conventional cars are still around. But they will be all high line cars, it will not be old clunkers or anything, um, older than ten years old.
So what?
Classic, anything of classic, obviously, could be older, but it's, if it's a classic car, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a very, uh, expensive vehicle.
So if you had to give a sort of rough percentage of what percent is going to be new cars versus what percent is going to be used cars, what would you say the split could be?
At this point, I can't tell you, I, I really don't know.
Okay, so I just need to clarify for you, and I guess for admission, that our regulations for business B zone, allow for new car dealerships. Um, and that used cars can be an accessory or incidental use on the site, which means they cannot be the primary use, which I guess, in my mind, means they cannot be the majority of your business.
Well, then I'm gonna say.
So I just kind of fed you the answer.
No, I know, it's just, it's hard, because, you know, you, you're negotiations, you don't have anything really hard that, you know, padded, you know, nailed down, so, um, it, it's gonna be tough, but, uh, at this point in time, I mean, how, what's the percentage have to be, is it gonna have to be more than fifty percent, because I can't say that it's gonna be more than fifty percent?
I mean, this is my personal interpretation of designing regulations, but as a commissioner, I will say, yes, more than fifty percent of your business would have to be new cars in order for you to be considering a new car dealership.
Of your, of your, I wanna just clarify, of your business is how to be answered, which means you could have five car, five classic cars in the showroom, but basically take orders on ten Teslas, I mean, that's what they have down in Greenwich, is they have a showroom, on Greenwich Avenue with three cars parked behind glass, and you can't drive them away, it's just a place to go meet, order your car, and pick it up, I guess somewhere else, because nobody's picking up cars there, is that the kind of business you're contemplating? Where people are, are, are they actually picking up their cars and fixing their cars there?
Well, they'll be fixing their cars, hopefully, um, but picking up their cars, at this time, uh, Connecticut, you can't sell a vehicle if you're a manufacturer, without having a franchisee. So that's the reason why Tesla does what it does.
What, what does Tesla do that it does?
Yeah, showroom instead.
Only have showrooms, they can't sell directly to anybody in the state, so you have to come look at it in Greenwich, and then you have to go to White Plains and purchase it. So that's, that's a lot different, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm gonna do that. So at this point in time, I'm gonna have to say, yeah, I mean, i- it's probably gonna be fifty percent or more. New cars. Yes.
Okay, and then the other questions I had you, I also mentioned in your application about, um, well, actually, second question, piggybacking on that, is what percentage of your business do you think will be the sale of new cars versus the repair? Because again, the repair is a secondary incidental use, so I wanna make sure that you're not.
That's pretty easy, because only twenty percent of repairs will be of the vehicle. Twenty percent of repairs will come from the sale of those vehicles.
The last question I have is about the rental cars. You wanna bring rental cars?
That, that's just a thought, that's, it doesn't have to happen, um, especially, I mean, that's, that was fifteen years ago, so things have changed with Uber, uh, rental cars have changed, um. I didn't include it when I spoke just now, because I just think we should table that, that for now.
And Strangle?
It was formerly a Texaco station, I wonder, is there any grandfathering of any of these, does he have a right to? I'm presuming that when it was a Texaco station, they repaired cars o- on that site, and so I'm just wondering, is it, uh, already allowed to be a car repair place?
Well, I was, I was the licensed dealer at the location.
The Texaco?
Yes. Licensed dealer for what? Licensed dealer for cars, I was a used car dealer.
Like thirty years ago, they were running.
Wasn't thirty years ago, it was two thousand seven, that's when we closed.
That's like, for me, the primary use was a gas station, which is permitted, so those were all accessory uses. And, you know, obviously, we don't have a split that shows, yes, sixty percent of sale were gas and forty percent was everything else, but, the optics of it was, it was a gas station, so that's, that's how those uses work.
No, I, sorry, you know, one thing that I, uh, wondered about here, uh, is, you know, uh, what is a new car dealership? Uh, all the new car dealerships I've ever been to sell used cars, as well as new cars.
Hmm.
Uh, and, uh, you know, because of the shortage of cars and ships and so forth, there's been a shift, and so that, uh, I don't know what, you know, Carl Chevrolet sells, but my guess is they probably sell more used cars than new cars. But on the other hand, I don't think that means they're not a new car dealership. So I, I, you know, I'm not sure that we have to be, uh, you know, if they have a contract, if they're a dealership for, uh, for a car company, and they have the right to sell new cars, and they hold themselves out as a dealer for whatever brand or brands, uh, I don't think you need to tell them that they only sell half their cars new, that they have the rest, uh, could happen to be, uh, they, they have to get at least fifty percent of their sales new, because I, I think it's still a new car dealership, even if you have a, significant number of, of used cars being sold.
So just to clarify the regulation, our regulation allows, with the site plan, new car dealerships, including a motor vehicle repair garage and sale of used cars, provided that, A, such repair garage and or sale of used cars is clearly accessory and incidental to the principal use, which would be the new car dealership, and B, such accessory operations are located on the same parcel as the principal use, with, approval of the zoning board appeals on a parcel within three hundred feet of the principal parcel, so my two cents is, it has to be accessory and incidental, whether we base that off of a percentage of sales, whether we base that off of a percentage square footage that it is of the overall site, there's many ways you can, can slight that. Yeah.
Younger dollars.
I don't know, I got a sale of what I rather, I'm not sure that that's what we metric, but, um, it has to be accessory to the main, it's just a new car.
This commissioner, there's the only comp I can think of, is the comp right down the street, which is Carl Chevrolet. Okay, they have a big new car show. They have new cars on the lot, right there on the campus, they also have the ones down the street on Grove, tucked behind, they have a storage lot. They do a large repair business, I think. Pretty big repair shop, uh, and they also have, uh, they also sell used cars, I mean, I, I know they sell used cars, because they get trade-ins and have to be sold, and they could be sold to dealer, to a sold individuals, and then they're selling a vehicle. So, I'm not sure what their dollar unit split is, I plead total ignorance, but when I look at it, I see a new car dealership, which also deals with used cars, and also has an incidental repair business. Given the size of the repair footprint for this particular application, it's, it's pretty small. Frankly, uh, you can sell a lot of cars in a small space, and you can't fix a lot of cars in a small space, if you need a vehicle there to be fixed. Um, you can always sell, sell a car off plan. So I, I, I'm, my sense is that it would probably fall into this, given what I'm seeing is the one comp in town. I, I can call on, so I mean, that's my view of this, this time, I welcome additional commentary.
I, I have two questions, I'm like.
Go ahead.
There is a, a current issue in at least two other locations in town, that repair vehicles, that park those vehicles on the street.
Yeah.
Um, my question, and, and there are two different questions here, you have a lot of parking spaces in the old bank structure. Um, would you be, uh, concerned with a condition of approval that requires that no vehicles be parked on the street?
Um, no, I don't have a problem with that, a- as I stated before, I, I'm the previous owner of the Texaco and Exxon. I was a dealer then, I had more cars parked all over that lot, and I never parked a car on the street. There were.
And, and I'm gonna ask my second question, because I'm reading it to the application of VMI. I'm assuming the VMI may stand for Buoso?
Yes, that's.
Okay, so, so a second question that I have, and this may go to you, Sarah, is we've had multiple applications come to us over the last year, where we've done extensive work to approve applications. The owners have then taken those building approvals and then, in effect, decided to sell that approval. Um, I assume you would be comfortable with a condition that said, this approval, and I don't know whether we can do this or not, Sarah, is, is, the, you know. is is the, you know, the business might make a lot of sense, but I'm not sure when to have it sold to another party.
Absolutely, no problem. There's, there's other conditions that we have to meet as well as a dealer. Any new car or pre-owned car dealer has to have two spots for servicing of a vehicle with a lift. And and also the the showroom floor. I mean, this doesn't mean anything to what we're saying right now. But there, there's a lot of other situations that can be quoted i- if you're having issues with dealers trying or, you know, this type of a, um. Business trying to open up in town and and I I'm not doing that. I've 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 been, you know, I've been around for a while there and I'm not looking to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just add something really quickly, I'm, I'm Faith Wos, I'm his daughter. I've helped a bit with the business and this location specifically. But what I just want to clarify on is when it comes to the primary use of that property, just to be clear, it is, I mean, we've gone over this, but again, just reiterate, it is supposed to be a dealership and then the secondary incidental, all of that would be repair. Its primary use is not a repair shop. It's very similar to when he owned the Texaco and Exxon. It was a gas station primarily and then everything else was secondary. This is very much similar besides the fact that we're taking the gas station. It's not a gas station, obviously, and it's a dealership, showroom.
That's not new. So can it, can I go for a second? This, this is, this is Chairman Radman, um. What I feel like is that this, this whole presentation is more of a pre-application than it is an application. Um, what's been submitted so far is incomplete, um, not to scale. We have no sense of a proper site plan showing a parking configuration that you're going to propose. We have no sense of scale for the interior of the building of what's realistically going to be possible in terms of maneuvering and parking of cars within the building, given the portions of the interior that you're looking to maintain. There's a couple of partitions, there's some bathrooms and things you wanna keep. Um, which could prove to be very difficult to keep, given how you need to maneuver a car into the space where you're putting a garage door, et cetera. So I I personally think we should not vote on this tonight. I think this applicant needs to do a little more homework and we need to see some more thorough documentation of what's being proposed on this site before we can vote on it. That's my opinion.
If I could just throw something in before you guys agree on that. Um, the only reason that that was not included in the application and we can get together the actual measurements for putting cars and configuring them in that showroom. But the only reason we didn't show anything very specific is because like you said, we're not changing practically much at all, you know, those walls are not.
But you're changing, but you're changing the use. So you're going from, you're going from a, a bank slash retail establishment that has a, a, a certain program within the interior and you're changing it to an automotive facility. Call it, call it repair shop, call it dealership, whatever you want to call it, that's going to have a whole different set of requirements in terms of how much clearances you're gonna need, how much maneuvering space you're gonna need. It's a whole different animal. And we as a commission can't vote on something if it's not been properly documented.
No, I completely understand. I was just giving context for the fact as to why, you know, not a lot was given, but those measurements can be provided. We can obviously get that.
Yeah, I mean, we should, this application should be treated like every other application that we do in town when it's a larger scale development of a site. We need a, we need a class A two survey showing parking configurations. We need an interior two-scale drawing showing what's proposed, a- all of that. So the actual existing A two survey and the parking configuration from the existing survey is not, is not adequate. Uh. I mean, there's nothing gonna change. Yeah, your as-built survey right now that's online has the footprint of the building and the meets and bounds of the perimeter property line. Does not show any parking, does not show any driveway, does not show curb cuts, does not show any of that. So what you need to do is take that survey and I I guess hire a team to properly document all of that. I did submit that, the actual paperwork. It's just not.
It's more of a line, um, it's, it's titled as though, so there's one titled A two survey, there's another titled as though. As though, it's all parking and.
Got it. Yeah, I was. Interior. At the survey. Interior, yeah, the interior, the, the eight foot or ten foot per car is acquitted to move the car around. I can fit five cars in the showroom alone. In the back room, I've been doing this all my life. I can fit six lifts if I wanted to, which I won't, I wouldn't do, and they can go back to back on each one. There are no clearances and then the cars can be stacked on top of each other, which I can stack cars in the back of the building to keep them inside when they're on the lifts. So as far as room is considered, all those measurements, it will work. I mean, that's just. We just need to see it.
So Dan, you're saying beyond what's shown here on this as-belt survey, we need.
I, no, the as-built survey, I I was looking at the other survey. The as-built survey does show the parking arrangement. If that's gonna be maintained in that, in that sense, that's fine. But he al-, you know, the applicant already mentioned that, let me go back to the file real quick. The applicant already mentioned that there's gonna be a garage opening at the back and how that affects the current curbing and maneuvering space at the back of the building, if there's going to be um, collapsible doors at the front. That means that the parking configuration and the curb condition at the front of the building is going to change to allow cars to come in and out of the showroom, quote unquote. Um. Actually, that won't change. That, those, those will be, they'll have ramps there that you can put on and remove the ruins. The curbing, the curbing will stay there. The front of the building is not changing whatsoever. Except for the storefront where the doors are. Just the doors are just gonna be collapsible. That's all they are. Yep.
This is Commissioner Chris, so Mr. Wos, I'm looking at the, um, it's the as-bill. So there's one curb cut on Elm Street at the present time. Is that correct, sir?
Correct.
We leave that as is.
Yeah, yeah, we're not touching anything.
Okay, got it. Just looking for a yes or no.
Okay, yeah, sure, yes.
Fair enough. Uh, and if I look at the uh, canopy for the drive-through, you're gonna leave that as is?
As is, just remove the teller stations.
Tellers, um, remove the teller stations. You don't need them, so going.
Then there's curbs there. Those curbs will be removed as well because there's no use for them. It's just one curb where the teller station sits on them.
Okay, and uh, where the uh, tellers are now, you're thinking of selling one perhaps to uh, charging stations for electric vehicles. Is that correct, sir?
Correct, so you could actually pull up and charge on both sides.
Okay, and the curb cut, uh, that's essentially approved, um, by the, uh, where the tellers are now, that curb cut is going to remain.
Correct.
So the only two curb cuts are the existing curb cut on Elm and the existing curb cut on Grove. They're, they stay as is, no new curb cuts.
Correct. Yes.
And um, regarding the parking that's in front of the building currently, that remains. Um, is, do you plan on parking vehicles for sale there as well? Whereas all, all the vehicles for sale will be in the showroom or will there be some out front as well?
Most will be, most will be inside. There, there won't be many outside, no. But I mean, a couple, there always was, we always had a couple of cars for sale.
But most of the front parking will be for people visiting the.
Correct. Yes.
Do we want to make a condition on how much visitor parking? Every other business in this town has a certain parking requirement for patrons and then he uses all of his parking in the front for, for vehicles, um, to changes, you know?
How many spots we got?
So.
Fifteen or so.
It said nineteen in the application and my understanding from the planner's memo is that there is no parking standard for.
Nineteen.
Car dealerships.
How many do we have at Stu, at Carl Chevrolet? I mean, it's a big place, what, five or six, maybe?
For people, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't.
Not a lot, not a lot.
I find that, I mean, that is, that was also been in existence for decades and I don't, I don't think ever had any sort of formal.
True, regardless of that, I'm thinking of as a practical matter.
We should ask.
Is there an issue or not?
To be neat.
I, I don't get a sense that, I mean, I've been to Carl Chevrolet a number of times and I don't get a sense that there's a problem there with parking if you're a visitor.
Well, there must have been an approval though when they had the, you know, hardware dealer that was, you know, not that long ago and is now fundamentally a storage, somebody on the side of the girl property.
I don't know.
However, that brings us back to this question, right? I, I, I believe Commissioner Radman, the chairman Radman is right. Th- this is really a pre-app that needs some additional detail for approval, right? I mean, there, there's a lot of good ideas here. Those of us who have been here a really long time have seen this property in its current, you know, chain-linked fence view and rather have a nice parking. But it should be a built-out business plan.
Are we discussing?
Yeah, we're discussing.
I, I think he's answered our questions. He said, he's basically answered the question saying exactly what's gonna change, exactly what's gonna remain the same. And we have, um, and now we have the question of how much parking and exactly how many cars. And it, and if he can answer, and we put that on the record, where's the condition of approval? You know, I, I don't know that there's any unanswered questions remaining.
This, this is Commissioner Turner. Um, I, I have some questions about, um, supplies, uh, where, where is the tools, the equipment gonna stay or be located, um?
Inside the repair shop.
Your car, there's a lot of movement, a lot of things that have to go together. Where, where does the oil get stored and, you know?
Well, I mean, oil, oil comes in cases, so you can store them anywhere for, for the, you know, for that fact. Um, i- inside the repair garage, uh, I mean, no different than I had when the Texaco station was there. I mean, I had a smaller footprint, um, maybe two-thirds of what I have now. And I had more oil and and everything you could imagine, even in emissions, uh, testing equipment. And we're a very busy shop there. We, we did very well.
We're, we're not questioning your ability to, um.
I, I know.
Make this environment happen. Um, just help us, give us some more information graphically so that we can, you know, agree and we can vote for it.
No, I, I get it. I get it. So you're, you're back, you're back. The building is pretty much an open floor plan with two beams overhead. If you remove the walls, you, you pretty much have an open floor plan. The back shop floor will be eighteen by sixty-one feet. Um, the showroom is fifty-six feet by sixty-eight feet. And and obviously we'll be pulling all building, building permits, the, the, the contractor will be pulling building permits and we're gonna be doing everything as to, you know, code and, um, the parts and everything can go in that, in those rooms. And most parts today, you, you don't stock parts for cars anymore. It, it's all on demand. Um, some oils, even oils, you order oils. So there's not really much that you really keep on hand and it's all on demand.
Well, I guess what, you know, what I'm getting at is, um, we don't want to see the, uh, the, these parts or end oil or whatever it might be, um, get stored on the site where it becomes a visual problem. Um, you know, you kind of need to show us or, and it can be a very diagrammatic type of thing, you know? The, this area is gonna be allocated for cases of oil. This area is where the tools go, the racks, it, you know, just give us a little more information so we, we can really endorse this.
Okay, you have to, you have to understand where we're coming from, right? It's the planning and zoning commission. So we're very, very much visual, very much about the graphics and the, the drawings that are presented to us, which become the record of what the application is, right? To take, you know, you've got two floor plans, a floor plan existing and a floor plan revised, which are kind of a, you know, a little bit of a Photoshop cut and paste kind of thing here and there and things aren't to scale and you've got, you know, one, one-foot doors and three-foot doors and a garage door that's like eighteen feet wide, you know, stuff like that. It's, it's, it's just, it, it doesn't look right, put it that way. So we need, we need a floor plan that is more accurate, that shows uh, to Mr. Turner's point, um, the, the various functions within the two main spaces that you're holding. You can even show a car layout so we can understand what the capacity of the front showroom is gonna be. Is it gonna be twelve cars? Is it gonna be twenty cars, something like that? Um, just to give us a better understanding of how the space is going to function at a, at a, at a real scale.
Commissioner Chris, I have some, uh, related questions. Uh, the two, uh, restrooms you have in the, in the picture here. Those will both be, uh, each is gonna be a unisex, uh, eighty-eight compliant restroom.
Actually, they already, yeah, they, the ones are women's and ones, men's. They, yes, they are unisex.
On the, uh, sir. Fair enough. The service floor, uh, are there gonna be lifts or anything like that? Or do you mean?
There will, there will be lifts, but they're in floor lifts. So what they are, they're, they're composite flat lifts, which I did not provide and I, I, I'm sorry that I didn't, but there, uh, you can drive over them, but when you need them, they come up, but they're scissor lifts and they lift up the vehicle right from the ground.
Thank you. So if they lift, that's, you're gonna have two, two or more installed?
Well, at the start, we'll do two. You won't, you won't go crazy at all.
Uh, and what is the procedure as far as, um, disposal of, uh, refuse, including maybe spent oil or other petrochemicals and?
Part, Connecticut DMV requires you to have a contract with a deep, uh, disposal company. Between the disposal company, usually what we do is we put a waste oil heater in there and we have the waste oil heater um, self-contained and it burns either any waste oil or any type of hazardous oil from a vehicle.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Harry?
Hi, thanks for the, uh, presentation. I had a question. I didn't see any articulation of signage plans. And one thing that we've run into in the past is just signage issues in terms of, you know, backlit signs and egregious lines. So you give us a little flavor on the subtlety of your signage?
No, absolutely, um. Existing signage, the placement of the signage now, we would actually apply for the permit, uh, for any signage. And pretty much we would place a signage in the same spots as the bank has. On the Grove Street and on the front of the building. That's it.
Okay, so on the front of the building, so kind of in that, that above the doors, I think is where the sign was and then.
Right.
Was there, I'm having a hard time recalling, to be candid with you, but I think in the old Texaco days, there was kind of a, a sign post on the corner of the intersection.
Yes.
Are you, are you ever, are you gonna put something there or any?
No, those signs, you do not want a sign there.
Okay, so we'd just be building applied signs, is that? Okay.
And Sarah, they would have to come, they'll come to you with an administrative approval.
Sure, and then if it doesn't meet the administrative requirement, she would come back to the commission. So we're not approving signs today, just to be clear. Or, yeah, or maybe, we can discuss by the story, they'll do anything they like.
Um, commissioners, other questions for the applicant?
If you think we're picking on you, then you should have watched last month's meeting where we told the applicant that they picked the wrong color purple and we made them repaint it. So, you know, it's, it's what.
It was lavender, it wasn't.
It, it's what, uh, Chairman Radman just said, which is we're all about how it looks with.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally with you. I agree.
Listen, you want a town committee and board and, you know, people that care about what the town looks like, so it's, it's appreciated, obviously.
And and Chairman is right, I, it, it would be hard for me to vote for it because the only picture I've seen is of a, is of the old Commerce Bank and I know that it's just not gonna look like that. So I want, I wanna, I wanna, uh, vote on rendering, you know, and, and something that actually shows cars. But I do, I do want to come back to the question of how much customer parking, um, do you need on site? And I guess, you know, uh, think carefully about that. I know that we probably are not holding Carl Chevrolet to that same standard of telling us exactly how many customer spots he has on site. And I know it moves and it changes daily with him across the street, but it's probably a question we're gonna ha- have to ask eventually, how much customer parking, uh, and how much, uh, product parking?
Okay.
Okay, so commissioners, I think we have a couple of things to consider here, um. The first would be, do we think that this use falls within a regulation, which is for a new car dealership? And if so, then we'll move on to the next conversation about what information you need, if any more, to vote on this. But, um, in that, do we feel like this needs the spirit in the letter of?
I think it probably does, as I said earlier, but, uh, uh, you know, right now it needs having conversations with, uh, manufacturers. So, uh, you know, I, I would think. So, uh, you know, I I would think that in approval, he would have to be subject to him actually uh successfully becoming a new car dealer, selling the product of at least one manufacturer.
Um, does anyone disagree that this meets the intent of the new car dealership regulations? So then the next question, I think, is the one that the third, that Chairman raised, which is do we have enough information in this evening to vote? And if we want additional information, so if we push this to the next meeting, what is it that we're asking the applicant to come back with?
Um, I can elaborate. Um, yes, I think we should push it to the next meeting, and yes, we should request additional information. We need a two-scale floor plan showing uh layout of the interior and where, what the operations are going to be in the respective rooms. Um, exactly, and a drawing to scale, showing exact locations of any additional new um, the garage door in the back or modified front door. Um, all the existing doors and perimeter, whatever's, whatever's going to remain. And if there is going to be some signage on the front, then we would need a two-scale drawing of the front elevation. Um, number one, showing the the new storefront, the collapsible storefront doors going in. And number two, showing how, you know, where the signage is. I know the signage will be a separate application, but at least, you know, uh documenting it on the facade, saying this is where signage will go.
I would just suggest, Mr. Wilson, is that, for example, it shows a picture of the roll-up garage door in the back. Seems to be taken from some other place, and says what it looks like, so.
Yep.
Picture of the back as built, and here's that door fitted into the building.
Of course.
Uh, similar with the front, with the change in the front. Um, in the um, uh, this repair area designate where the lifts would go. You mentioned you have an oil heater where that might go, uh, where some of the tool chests may go and so forth. And the showroom, give a picture of, you know, here's more or less the size of the cars, and here's how that media range, and that's where you just get a a feel for space. That's what I would suggest.
Okay.
Um, and
Minor stuff.
I would add that on the parking, on the A two survey that you showed for the asphalt, that shows that I can consider even your action today, except that you can show us, I I mean, I guess you could just tell us the number of how many spaces are for customer versus product, but if you wanted to label them um, there it up, but also free buying, so that we have a number of that.
I want a question, this is Commissioner Chris. How many employees do you assume will be onsite at any given times?
Five, four or five.
That's about the same as the branch bank, frankly. You had maybe one or two tellers, you had someone doing the drive-through, you have a manager, so it seems like the same number of staff.
Yeah.
So, call that, score that even, score that even.
It's on the parking plan, so the employee parking, customer parking, product parking. To the extent that you can, or just tell us how many spaces, you don't have to label them.
Well, one of the question, so one of the question, Mr. Wilson, um, yeah, given some of the items that maybe need to be delivered to this establishment, such as large mechanicals, I'm wondering, are the drive-through areas and loading areas adequate, given the types of vehicles that would arrive with equipment?
I I would think so. They're they're not large. They wouldn't be big vehicles.
But fair enough, just wanted to ask, thank you. I apologize.
I I was only going to add, as long as you're gonna redo this work, um and I know that you're Labrador going up the stairs, and I thought maybe that's perfect, but uh uh, it would be useful, I I mean, you've described a probably a high-end dealership. Um, you know, I I don't think you're gonna want to try to get uh Fiat's or Tatas or what, anything else here.
Lot of Italian there, you know.
We sell Fiat's around here.
I I don't think so, but I I I do think that to the extent that this is designed to accommodate a different type of vehicle, I personally wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as it covers all of the other issues here in terms of your conversations.
I understand.
Commissioners, anything else? Okay, um, Mr. Viozzo, are you, are you, do you feel clear on what you need? And if you don't, you can always go back to Ms. Carey between now and the next meeting to
Oh, that's fine. I I I know what I need. Um, I'm I'm not happy about it. Um uh, reason being is uh you um, you know, a- as a past business owner, and I'm not just saying that you you have to, you know, uh, take my word for it. I'm not saying that. I understand you have to see what you have to see. But it's been a, it's been a difficult three years at that location, um, when the bank left. Um, the property is overtaxed, and and now I'm left with this building that's been empty for three years. And we've brought many retail establishments to that site. Um, and even tried to get the bank to stay with a, with a humongous rebate. And they didn't want anything to do with the town. And neither do most of the retail establishments that came to that location. So this was kind of a hail Mary for me. Um, so I just wanted to tell you guys that I'm a little, I'm a little disappointed. And uh, but I will move forward, and I will do exactly what you said.
I think, I think you can work through this, so just collect those things for the next meeting. We will continue this application to the December.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, um, moving on to items seven on the agenda, eighty Main Street. On application of Mufla study, I'm surprised if I fast-correct that. Authorized agent for Cassis Group LLC owners for a site plan approval pursuant to section four point two point C point one to allow first floor retail in the retail A zone at eighty Main Street, map T block sixty-seven, lot twenty-two. Do we have someone here this evening that is on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Please, please come sit here. And you can give us your names and subscribe to us, what your, what you plan.
Could you speak up, please?
Um, smile, say, and we So, um, we're planning to, we're not planning to change the interior or exterior on the location. So all we want to do is just for a signing and then fix the rear end of the uh, for like add shots to the inside of it.
So Commissioners, this is the former location of the Palme Interred Sauna Spa. Um, and you're, can you talk about the change in use? What, I mean, that was a personal kind of wellness space. You're proposing a retail business. What do you propose to sell?
Um, we're gonna make it like a tobacco shop with exotic snacks and there's very soon uh, something like that, yeah.
Tobacco shops, Commissioner?
Uh, cigars, cigars.
Uh, just as a matter of information, there was a um, smoke shop that was opened on South Avenue that was selling something other than tobacco. So, uh, this is cigars, we're talking about.
Yeah, like cigars and uh
Sorry?
Like a convenience.
Like the convenience store, yeah.
They mostly like cigars.
Do you Do you already have an op, a business like this in operation in other locations, or would this be your first and only?
Yes, we have a business in ninety-five Reef Road.
I'm sorry, what time is that?
Uh, oh, that's in Fairfield.
Ninety-five what?
Reef Road.
Reef Road. Sir, you planned a uh, a walking humidor?
Uh, walking humidor, yes, okay.
Um, this other location at ninety-five Reef Road, so one of the things that stands out to me about the location you've chosen is that it doesn't have any parking designated toward it, towards it, nor do we require any parking for businesses in the retail A zone. So you're not required to have parking.
Oh.
It seems to me the type of business that will, would benefit from having parking, so people can pull up and get something and leave. My question for you is, I mean, at the ninety-five Reef Road location, do you have parking? So how do you propose to operate a convenience store tobacco-type business without any designated parking? It can be quite hard to get a spot right there on Main Street.
I think because here is like, there is a lot of um, you know, like people walk, trust and so you need, you don't need to park in this place, it's on the Oh, there, there's parking lot, this near to the shop. Yeah, so it's it's a really available, yes, well, over here, I don't see that all these spaces are available.
Sir, I'm looking at the um, I think it's a new floor plan. And so you enter, and I I'm not sure, I I guess you enter and there seem to be two rectangular rooms at the beginning. They seem to be passed through, and then you enter larger rooms and display cases, so that entryways of foyer. Foyer, when you enter.
Foyer.
You can maybe pull it up?
Yeah.
Hold on just one minute, sorry.
Which is with also how Palme was, you walked into a much smaller foyer.
I'm just wondering if it's going to be changed as part of this, um, as well as what's happening in the back. And you mentioned, uh, the gentleman also uh mentioned a walking humidor, and see one labeled as such, so I was just Oh, yeah. So you enter, sir. So you enter, I guess about the bottom is uh Main Street. And there's a foyer, and then you have some display cases and storage. Where would the walking humidor, you mentioned, be?
Oh, I think in the uh
If I may, Andreas Sonny on behalf of CC Group, landlord rep. The humidor is where the storage room is positioned there, or up to the left. We just have to pull down some walls to make sure it'll fit. It drops in. So the foyer of the existing comm spa will remain because it's gorgeous. It would be a travesty to remove what is there. As you pass through that foyer into the main space, either on the left or the right, depending on final contractor decision, is going to be the walk-in humidor. Uh, using the existing walls and the existing approvals of everything that was built prior, right? So we're just taking down three treatment rooms, the dividing walls, opening it up to the left, leaving everything else the same. Front, back, and exterior. The new signage will match the existing signage that was approved, just a different name. Sorry to jump in.
That's fine, thank you, sir. So the um, space labeled storage is related humidor.
Yes, that that is the expectation. Um, we were originally thinking to move it to the left in front of the bathroom. But based on our review, as we've moved through this, it's probably going to be on the right. But again, it's a movable unit.
As far as the back of the building, it's going to be one door and a whole separate area. What's, what's the intended use in the back?
There are, there are two bathrooms there now, two full baths, a fire standpipe. Things that would cost more to move or take down, so we're just going to leave it as is, use it for storage. We just need the front half, really.
Is there a intention to sell baking products in this establishment?
Not to my knowledge, but I'll let the store tenants speak on products.
Bake, baking products?
Baking?
Smokeless tobacco.
Confectionery goods and things of that nature?
No, vaping with a V, Victor.
You know, there's mechanical cigarettes and
It's electronic.
Yeah, you're not selling that. Okay.
Why, why wouldn't they be able to sell vaping electronics?
Yeah, they can't regulate that, they're They wouldn't need approval to sell vapes.
Yeah.
So cigars are the big market here. I think we can all agree, for New Canaan and then the demographic.
The next question is, sir, can I ask who the applicant is? Cause I, I was just curious, um, so the Grace Group owns Cassis Group? Or is it for you?
Sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
What's the relation between Grace Group and the tenant?
I'm the, I'm the listing broker and the landlord rep broker, here to assist with any questions. The application is being made by Mufla.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, it was a little
So, kind of, uh, this is Chairman Radman, uh, similar comments to our previous application in terms of your floor plan and what you're kind of showing here, um, it looks a little incomplete. Um, is there a front cashier counter and a point of sale that's going to be part of this floor plan somewhere? I would assume so.
Where's the cashier? We see display casing, go in and display.
It's gonna be in the front.
In the front, yes.
So it's going to be in the front foyer, in that, in that front area or where the display is?
Um, by the display, yeah, like in the area, we have the
Is it that rectangle there that the mouse is circling? That, that's where you pay?
Uh huh.
But I don't think, I think on the interest uh box area.
Mr. Radman, I, since you alluded that this was similar to the last application, are there other things you would like to see in terms of a site plan application that have not been provided here?
Well, what what I'm mostly concerned about is, especially in the retail zone, we're we're always concerned about the um, the visibility from the storefront, from the street, from the sidewalk of what we're going to be looking into. Um, you know, we have a uh, a criteria in terms of you know, um, when we had the fitness centers go in and nail salons go in, that there the front twenty percent had to be display and, um, we didn't want to see services in those areas. Um, I understand this is different, this is all retail, but I'd be interested in understanding what that front vestibule area with those kind of niches drawn in there. What is going to be in there? Um, you know, will it be strictly display? Will there be a seating area? Will there be a point of sale? Um, you know, eh, someone asked about a cigar humidor, is there going to be a a humidor room, or is it going to just be the display cases? Um, it it just seems like we need a little more detail based on the description of the application, which is uh, I'm going back to it, uh uh there it is. Um so the description is luxury tobacconist. Um premium products focused on everyday essentials, upscale convenience. Array of high-quality products such as snacks, apparel, tobacco merchandise, and hardware. Uh, I'm assuming lighters and cutters, et cetera, uh, and designed to provide superior shopping experience. So seems like a a big conglomeration of all kinds of things happening here between you know, baseball caps to cigars to the greatest candy bar from England. Um, which is is fine, um, but with that type of an array of product, it would be it would be, it would help us to understand what we're going to see from the street, since we're always very sensitive about what our streetscape looks like.
Okay, do you have um potentially, if we continue this, do you have photos of your other store that you said that you have in Fairfield? Uh, you know, in terms of the interior, how that layout is? I know it would be the same as this, that some of the Commissioner could see.
Um, and we have, we could show you.
Okay.
We, we have, we have some some picture.
Okay.
It's not a similar one.
Uh, Sarah and the board, is it, uh, we included some photographs in the application on the last page. And uh, just the concern about the front of the building. We're going to keep the twenty percent that's there already, that those gorgeous cases, and if you guys want to see X instead of Y, I'm sure their tenants agreeable to that. He has set as much in the application and with the landlord. Whatever restrictions, whatever we need to make it exactly what New Canaan likes, we're willing to do that.
No, we're, we're just looking, this is Chairman Radman, we're just looking for the applicant to be clear on the application, what they're proposing, right?
Perfect.
For, for that document that was submitted, that floor plan as page six of the application. N- nothing's really clear there. So if, if that's what's going to be, if existing display cases to remain, put that on there, right? Again, we're, we're, we're graphical. We, we need to see it documented in front of us to understand what the scope of the application is in order to weigh in on it properly. Just talking about it and not showing it properly, and sometimes contradicting what you're showing, doesn't help us.
What's going to be the alcohol? That was one question that was asked but not answered.
The lobby, the lobby square.
Coming through the front door.
The lobby is going to be a sign, this is
Just sign.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing, it's just a sign, okay.
Well, I would just recommend that if the applicant is able to clarify what
Well, I would just recommend that if the applicant is able to clarify what will be in that front foyer, that. The commission make a decision tonight, and if there's anything that is not. What is typical of the retail A zone in that foyer, you know, we have to, as planning staff. Sign off on it, and it would come back to you all if there was something that was not what was proposed. On my understanding, but there have been small, you know, retail applications like this before, where you have made decisions on that application with. This amount of information. But that's just my sense.
Sir, is there any? Really be concerned about?
No, that would all be the state, nothing of town. It's the same as liquor sales, we don't get involved.
Uh, this is Commissioner Surtler, may I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Uh, the, um, the applicant said there was another store. Existing store that he, that's similar to this that he owns. Is that true? And if it is, where is that?
Uh, it's in, uh, we still. Uh, fix in right now.
Okay.
So it's not done yet. It's in ninety-five pretty pro in, uh, there.
Can you somebody repeat that? I can't hear that.
So Mister Sword though, it's under construction, it's not, doesn't sound like it's operational.
Yes.
Mister Engel. I just don't wanna.
Okay, so there are no other existing stores, similar stores that you own or operate at this point?
Not in operation, it's under construction, and he said the address is ninety-five Reef Road in Fairfield.
No, um, but my second question was, in addition to that store under construction, this proposed store. Are there any other stores that you own or operate?
Just this, the one that you're proposing in Ucanan and the one in Fairfield, that's it, you don't have other stores?
No, we have, um, we have one that's in, uh. In in New York and in the Bronx, but it's, uh. It's liquor and convenience as well.
Okay.
This one? Sorry. Again, I can't hear.
They also own a store, not similar to this, but they own a store in the Bronx that is a liquor and convenience store, but that's not. Similar to what they're proposing here.
Got it, okay, thank you.
All right, commissioners, what what do we want to do with this one? You wanna? Vote on it? Do we want to have them come back with additional information?
Um, it's, um, Commissioner Turner, um, have we had any input from? You know, the public, uh, are there any issues out there that? People are concerned about that we might not be aware of?
So this is the site plan application, and my understanding is we don't. Take public comment on that? Not required, not required to take public comment, um, I guess we could take public comment on it, Mister Turner, but. We haven't.
Understand.
Not has to be notified, it's not advertised in the newspapers. Right. So it's different than the other earlier community.
Well, I think we could take, uh, the planner's, uh, suggestion and, uh. Approve it subject to the planner reviewing. Uh, reuse of, uh, the display cabinets. Uh.
And front windows.
And front windows. So I would, uh, I I would move that we approve it subject to, uh, the planner, uh, approving the, uh. Uh, details as to display cabinets and the front windows.
Okay, we have a motion on the board, do we have a second?
Just, um, can I interject one thing? Any signage, any external exterior signage?
So again, it's, you know, how all businesses work, they would have to submit a sign. Application to us if it meets the requirements, great, we approve it, if it doesn't, we ask them to change it, or they have to. Come back to us, no neon signs are allowed ever, you know, no signage in the windows, it's. They're all held to the standard, and it would be agreed by us, and nothing would be taken in for.
Okay, so, um, very, the second, any discussion? Further discussion on this, I heard one condition was that the planner would review the use of the display cabinets and front windows.
It seems to me that on the surface, he's asking for retail use in the retail zone, so it meets the criteria. With regard to parking, you can't ask the applicant to have a a greater burden than any of the other. Applicants up and down that street, it's in the ma- magic circle, you know, parking has been an issue there for. A hundred years and will be for the next hundred years, so I can't really, you know, have have an opinion. I do know that this commission has been, um, as the chairman pointed out, uh, very sensitive to the way things look. From the street, so much so that we insisted that product be shown. You know, in some cases, so that the, so that it didn't look like, uh, in the retail zone was being taken over by service businesses. Home, the business you're replacing was a service business, and that's why there was no product in the windows. That's the reason. We're asking so many questions about what product are you gonna show, and how are you gonna show? Because how it looks from the street is very important to us, more so than a, a, the photo you showed of display cases. But the presentation in window, the lighting. The, whether it's in a case, whether it's sitting on a table, um, we have provision, we have. Rules already that you're not allowed to put, um, posters and signs up against the glass, you know, so we are very specific. On the, what the presentation is. On Main Street. So I'm comfortable as long as you're comfortable, Sarah, educating them as to these standards, because I think that. Um, we haven't been, we haven't seen any examples of the product, specific examples of the product. Or its presentation to the street, and whether they're using halogen lights or fluorescent lights. You know, is going to matter. And anybody who's not familiar with us in this town would say, what, what's the difference? A light's a light, fluorescent, halogen. You know, whatever, but we have rules like about lighting, lit signs. And we rejected somebody for the wrong color. Um, uh, in the retail zone last month. We just said this color does not work. Within our historic village guidelines, and therefore you have to change the color, so as long as you understand that. And that she's going to have to approve it, that's what this mo- motion is all about, that's what we're voting on, it's gonna be, so. I would, I would encourage you to have a lot of communication, Sarah, um. About lighting, color, presentation in the windows in particular. I think I got everything.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so let's take a vote on the motion on the table that was made by Mister Knag, seconded by Mister Chris. To approve this application subject to the planner reviewing the use of the display cabinets and front windows. Mister Radman, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Chris?
Yes.
Mister Casavan?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Harry?
Yes.
Mister Knine?
Yes.
Mister Swirlo?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Congratulations, welcome to Ucanan.
All right, well, once they're good to that, I'll read the the next. Application, uh, so we're now on item eight on the agenda, which is Fort Cherry Street. Upon application of Stephen Athen with Steve Rossin. Loxie Rosen, Questin, and Varansky. Varansky LLC authorized agent. For Cherry Street LLC. Owners for a site plan approval pursue intersection two point eight point two point eight point one. And four point three, and three point ten. To convert and change a unit from the former location of Bank of America slash Merrill Lynch. To a new car dealership with exterior facade changes, in the business A zone at Fort Cherry Street. Map T lot thirty-four lot nine sixteen. Okay, that's very thin.
Thank you, uh, to the ending, uh, members of the commission for the record, my name is Steve Finn, I'm here representing, uh, the applicant. With me here tonight is John Coffin of Ucanan Performance Car LLC. Was assigned a lease with the owner of the property at Fort Cherry Street to operate a Polestar dealership at this location. Mister Coffin is the principal of several car dealerships, including Polestar of Westport. Volvo of Westport, Volvo of Manhattan, Volvo of Brooklyn, Audi of New Rochelle. And Porsche dealerships in New York and New Jersey. For those of you who don't know Polestar, it is a Swedish automobile brand that makes sustainable all-electric vehicles. It is owned by Volvo and has a global presence. Also with me here tonight are Steve Loetetha, Bill Brown, and Dennis Pappas. Of Taco Limited. Taco specializes in the construction of and as advisors to automobile dealerships. I am told that they've been involved in no less than a hundred, uh, car dealerships construction and 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 advisory role. Taco design, the proposed changes to the site, to this Polestar dealership, and also will be responsible for the construction. We also have on Zoom Elaine Due of AKRF, our traffic consultants. Uh, and this due can answer any traffic and parking questions you may have about the project. Uh, she is studying for Mercy Tarala, who is the author of the Traffic Report, we're not in conflict tonight. Fort Cherry Street is owned by DF Cherry Street LLC. Who has authorized to file a dispo-ment application, and has also authorized to act as their agent. Uh, David Firestein is here tonight representing the owner, he's in the back there. This property is located in the business A zone. My car dealership is permitted use in the zone under Regulation four point four D one. And zoning regulation four point three, seven point ten, having to do with new car dealerships. This dealership is limited to selling new and possibly used Polestars. I think it's fair to say that at least ninety percent of the sales will be of new cars. And it'll only be an occasional trade-in that may be retained on-site, that might be sold as a, uh, used car vehicle from this site. There will be no repair facilities, service department, or parts department on the premises. This location, as you probably all well know, uh, previously served as the, uh, offices for Merrill Lynch, Bank of America, and Ucanan. For quite a long period of time. Because you also all know Merrill Lynch moved across the street, Caddy Corner, to this property several years ago. And the property has remained vacant for a number of years, I think it's about three years since Merrill Lynch moved out. The plan is to convert the existing building to a showroom with some offices for the salesmen and employees of the daily. The footprint of the building will not change. The showroom is designed to hold four or five cars. Property has an existing parking lot on Cherry Street located to the rear or the front of the building. That lot has fifteen parking spaces, one of which is the handicap space. A maximum of four employees are expected to be on-site at any time. And there's more than adequate parking for them and customers, and even for a couple of test drive vehicles. Uh, car inventory would be kept lost guide at the Polestar dealership in Westport. In order to get cars into the zone, eggs lab and aluminum door will be constructed with a current model. Uh, window like getting along Park Street. Uh. Derek, you have the access to the site and the chance?
Hi, can I?
Picture number four.
I think I may just stand. Oops, sorry, I lost it. It's the A one oh one. Uh, thank you very much. So you can see in the left-hand corner of the screen. The proposed, uh, access into the showroom, the curb cut on Park Street. You can also see, obviously, the parking, um, um, uh, lot in the rear, which remains as it is. And the interior proposed changes, uh, for the showroom and the offices. Uh. So that will be along the mortally, uh, uh, side, currently there's a, a large window there. Uh, we'll get to the regular minutes, we'll show how that will look. Uh, 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 from the street. Uh, the brick accessway leading to that new door, uh, will be to a curb cut on Park Street. Uh, the access thing will look similar to the existing sidewalk. Since the accessway will rarely be used and does not lead to a parking lot or garage. Our traffic engineers believe it should not be considered a driveway, but more of an access into the showroom. New cars will be delivered on a two-car, uh, trail, towed by a pickup truck, it won't be one of these large car carriers. Most likely, the most likely the car trailer will park in the rear parking lot. And the cars offloaded there and then driven from there onto Park Street and then into the showroom. Cars will be delivered at off-hours into the showroom. Cars purchased by customers will most likely be parked in the parking lot at the rear until they are delivered to the customers. Though I learned, uh, just this evening, that Polestar's model generally is to deliver the cars directly to the customer at their homes. So that even, uh, even the sale of cars, uh, to customers will generally not be at this site. Uh, or I should say the transfer of cars to customers will not be at the site. Uh, we have been in touch with the town engineer Maria Copeland as recently as this afternoon about the curb cut. And we are in the process of providing her with some more information about that. We're fine with, uh, if the commission were to look upon this fairly. With an indication that obviously, uh, any approval will be subject to a building permit and approval by the town engineer. Uh. A traffic study has been prepared by AKRF and submitted with our application. Regarding the change of use to a car dealership and the curb cut. The report concludes that the proposed use will generate inevitable traffic. And will not impact existing traffic operations. In addition to proposed parking lot, it needs to reject the parking demand, and therefore it's more insufficient for the proposed dealership. Lastly, access to the site will largely be provided by the existing conditions. With the addition of one limited access curb cut strictly for delivering vehicles to the showroom. The traffic exception concludes if not anticipated to impact the existing traffic operations. As mentioned again, the curb cut will be run by public works and engineering. And we're in the process of working with Maria on that issue. And again, this do a traffic expert is on the business and having questions for her. With regard to the changes to the building, as mentioned, there's no change to the footprint of the building. You know, from relatively minor changes to the front facade. Uh, and some to the side to side of the building that faces Cherry Street. That's the south elevation there. Uh, we know that, uh, the signage has to be complied with sign regulations and need to be, to be run by the tenant planner. Uh, most of the existing brick exterior is to remain. With most of the changes to the windows and doors. The cupola and the roof line will remain as is. Taco went through a number of iterations designed to be consistent with. And provide to the use of the site as a, as a car showroom. But also to comply with the Village District Design Guidelines. We circulated a couple of the earlier designs to the town planner for her input. And I think it's fair to say that, uh, this, uh, that, uh, this one met with, uh. Some, uh, welcome, uh, welcome remarks, uh. But Sarah can obviously comment on her own about that, uh, if necessary. But, uh, the prior iteration had a large plaque that sort of up on the roof. Uh, it's sort of mirrored a little bit the way the Merrill Lynch building looks across the street. Uh, this is a by far superior design, in my humble opinion. Uh, I think the design submitted with the application and the one intended to be used for the site. Blends in very, very well with the neighboring buildings. And I think actually represents an upgrade to the current building. The proposed side of the modern and fresh look, which is very consistent with neighboring buildings, but keeps many elements of the existing building. And there is a rendering, I think you've all seen it, I don't know if Sarah, if you want to. There's the rendering, um. You can see the. Windows have been changed. The entrance, uh, along Cherry Street has been enhanced a little bit. And the removable door where the curb cut is, is. Uh, to the left middle of the picture. And you can see how the, the little accessway into that, uh, into the showroom will be made of brick. And blend very, very well with the surrounding area. You can also see in the back, one of the neighboring buildings. You can also see in the back one of the neighboring buildings, and I think, as I said, that it it really fits in very, very well. Well, I know that was a quick, quick review. Uh, Mr. Chris.
Good question. Yes, there's Polestar on the window. Is that allowed?
I believe that's allowed as long as there's no logo.
So stickers on windows are not permitted, although we have your business.
Wouldn't be, he wouldn't be the new Canaan planning zone commissioner we were picking. Uh, fair enough.
I mean, I you, I mean, just to, sorry.
I just make that comment. Uh, could you talk about the basement? You show a picture of the basement, some storage, but there's basically empty spaces in the same, it's on page two of this.
Yes.
Well, what, talk to me about what, talk to us about what you're planning down there.
That's Mr. Kaufman or?
Anyone who is good at looking and needs to speak, you'll have to come up here because I don't think he's going to hear you from the background.
By the better of that. The basement is. I'm sorry, it's John Kaufman. I'm uh the principal for the business. The basement is for, it's gonna be for either file storage or brochures. That's what it's not, it's not, uh. I kind of joke when he says, you know, showing some people. It's rough, it's gonna remain pretty rough, where are you gonna?
No, no, I'm gonna fix it up because I wanna be able to go down there and be clean and plus we don't want anything standard to get damaged.
What I'm hearing is a fairly light use of non-dangerous items being stored down there. No petroleum or anything like that. Uh, also a question on the um on the floor plan. You've had uh two rooms, they will both create, are they both going to be ADA compliant? Um, there is currently one existing ADA compliant bathroom, the other one is not compliant, these bathrooms are uh drawn as is currently, so um to answer the question, one will be compliant, one is not, but that can be reconfigured if necessary.
Uh, excuse me, it's Commissioner Turner. Um, I disagree. Um, I realize that, uh, you know, we're getting into the preview of uh code requirements, but um neither of those restrooms conform to ADA. And I strongly suggest that you have your architect, your designer, take another look at that. And if I might add, the handicap parking space, the path of travel from that parking space to the entrance does not comply with ADA. The uh ramp down from the parking garage to the sidewalk is greater than one and twelve.
I'd like to point out for the record, so noting Mr. Turner, but but this parking configuration has is exactly what is now, not changing the configuration. Whether that triggers um ADA uh review, I don't know. If it does, obviously, the client will comply.
Well, sir, if I can offer some uh advice, ADA is civil law, and it doesn't trigger a code as such. It's that somebody could bring a lawsuit against the owner because it does not conform to ADA. And I would just take a second look at that and figure out if that slope is greater than one and twelve, and reconfigure your restrooms so that you don't get into an issue down the road. It's just a recommendation.
Agreed.
Agreed and appreciate. Yeah, so you you're not doing any repairs in this location?
Not repairs, our, since Polestar is owned by Volvo, they allow us to do repairs at Volvo dealership, my Volvo dealership in Westport.
I see. So is the Polestar in Westport uh adjacent to the Volvo in Westport?
Yes.
And then you own that?
Yes.
Uh, this is Commissioner Wardlow, may I ask a question, please?
Um, can you just, I think Mr. Knagg is finishing.
Oh, I'm sorry, very hard for me to hear, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Swirlo, it is your turn now.
Oh, it is, okay. I did hear that. So um, I own a Volvo, uh full disclosure, I don't have to recuse myself, but that's just a joke. I I've been following this development uh with Polestar very uh closely. I mean, it's hyper-electric Nordic vehicle that is usually associated with Scandinavian design, especially your dealership in the dealership, uh almost everywhere now is converted to Scandinavian uh aesthetic interior and exterior. And in this case, you're actually converting a building that has nothing to do with that. And I think um doing quite a good job to accommodate both the town's issues as well as the vehicles' issues. So I just wanted to give you a a compliment with that. We we don't often do that. I think we're doing something that that is well conceived. Um, I do like the dealerships, the Volvo dealerships, that are choosing or utilizing Scandinavian references. But this is very, very different, and I think you're respecting the town in terms of how you're approaching us. Uh, I do agree about the ADA comments that was that were made before. Uh, if you're rebuilding this, uh the interior of this building, better, why not conform to a full ADA requirements? But uh my comments were basically meant as a compliment in terms of how you're uh re- reorganizing and re-envision, re-envisioning a uh a town building.
It's Commissioner Turner. Um, I and I agree with that totally. I think this is a great use for this building, and um I'd like to see um this happen. It's a, it's a good thing for the town.
Mr. Angle has a question.
Yes, you said in your presentation that the uh this building is overparked. It is um from memory, I think that the first floor plan is roughly around three thousand feet, and from memory, I think the retail standard is about five spaces per thousand feet. So I think it's exactly uh meeting of the regulations. I think office use, which it had been, uh Merrill Lynch was three spaces per thousand, but retail, I think, is closer to five per thousand. So when you say it, you have more than enough parking, but you also said in your presentation that you would be using some of the fifteen spots for uh product, not customer parking, and you would be using four of the spots for employees. Uh, so my question is, how much parking is required by code? And how much of the fifteen spots do you anticipate using for customers?
So my opinion is that there there is no standard for this. I think you may have heard that earlier today, but what I was, my analysis, and I think it's backed up by AKRF, is that if you have four employees, they maybe would would service four customers at a time, five customers at a time. I think that's generous in terms of how many customers might be. You have two, two potential uh test drive vehicles, so so now you're up, you're up to about ten or eleven parking spots, so you still have four extra. That's sort of how I came to that conclusion.
No, you're educating us, making the discrepancy here, uh as to whether the parking requirement or not.
There is no parking requirement um that I believe we discussed on the other tweet at two seventy-two.
So it's not retail?
It is, this is not considered. It is.
Yeah.
This manager goes out of question. If I heard you correctly. Yep, you're correctly, um, yeah. I have one of these cars and I bring it for service. I can drop it at this location. It gets flatbedded off to Westport for repair. Is that correct?
Yeah, totally, that's what we prefer, what our clients prefer, and it allows us to be told that it works well and better. It allows us to control the workflow better. We pick a car up and the client's office or home. Uh, if somebody wants to come in, that's great, and they can look at the car. But uh, which is the idea, but um more often than not, people forget their car, pick them.
So um.
But yes, they could, they could come there and drop it off, and we would bring it. Yeah, we have a uh two-car trailer.
So if I have a car and I'm dropping it off, let's say you're at this facility for repair, assuming it's drivable, I drive it in, I leave it in the spot. Um, a pickup truck with a trailer would pull into the lot or maybe be around the corner, or would it be on the street?
It would be in the lot, it would pull into the lot. It's my pickup truck and my trailer, which would be keeping Westport. Before I have a storage lot in Fairfield, where I'm really worried about. Uh, so that that would be dispatched to get what's coming to the game, pick up the car.
So there's a car with a carrot sitting in the parking lot, a pickup truck with a trailer comes in, the car is loaded, the pickup truck drives off to Westport, the car gets fixed, and then it gets dropped off at the customer's residence.
Correct.
Would be the, would be the plan. So what I'm hearing is that there's not going to be a pickup and a trailer sitting in this lot for a long period of time.
Uh, it can't be, because we we use it for for multiple use.
That's what I'm assuming, I didn't want to hear explicitly in the records, so yeah, fair enough. That's, you asked my question, thank you.
Does the, does the traffic report touch on that added usage of the rear lot for pickup and drop-off via a trailer?
Uh, I can speak to that. Um, Elaine Due, uh traffic engineer and technical director for AKRF, studying in from Marissa Tarallo. Um, we did not specifically look at cars that are dropped off in the parking lot. However, we did do a parking demand assessment in which we found that uh the parking demand is estimated to be approximately seven vehicles with fifteen total provided parking spaces. Um, so you have eight excess spaces.
Yeah, I'm less worried about the parking demand. I think we touched on that earlier. What I'm worried about is the impact of the added use of the pickup and drop-off function that's going to be happening here. Number one, given the the tightness of the of the parking lot here, right, it's a non-conforming two-sided parking lot, it's it's not the proper distance between parking spots, it's it's quite tight. Now we're introducing a trailer for pickup and drop-off of vehicles on what could arguably be either the first or second most busy intersection in town. Um, it seems like we're trying to add a lot of function here into a corner that is not going to be very receptive to that. I could see major backups happening here as a trailer is trying to park parallel or back into that area. It's is is the repair function of the, let me rephrase that, is the pickup and drop-off of the repair function a necessity for this location? Or can customers just be told, hey, listen, this is just a showroom, you gotta drive up to Westport and drop your car off? Like, like every other Volvo, you know, driver.
I I can't answer that unless you answer.
Uh, Steve, before you go into that, I also wanted to mention, we also did a trip generation, trip generation estimate where we found that um we, this uh showroom would only be generating approximately up to eight vehicles per hour. So it is also a relatively low vehicle generator, and we're not anticipated to uh impact traffic at the intersection, and I'll pass it over to Steve to discuss the rest of the question.
But to to be clear, you did state earlier that your traffic impact assessment did not take into account the function of the repair, drop-off, and pickup via trailer. Is that correct?
Uh, that was only for the parking demand assessment. So our trip generation assessment uh assesses the entire demand of the site and of the operations of the showroom, including this, these pick up and drop, pick up and drop off operations.
Okay.
For a moment, please. Why, my experience with Volvo is that they now pick up and drop off at your home.
No, I'm gonna ask you to hold your question for a minute because the gentleman in the room wanted to respond to this.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. The
majority of service would not come to the Canaan because it wouldn't be convenient for the clients, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be convenient for the dealership. In the event that someone said, well, I'm taking the train, I'm going on a train from the Canaan station.
Okay.
We're gonna say, sure, no problem. Just like we do in Westport now, someone says, you know what, um, I gotta catch, I gotta catch a train to Sawburnsack Station. Either we give them a ride or or, so it's not, it it it's not something that I I envision happening because this wouldn't be convenient for, I I
The other thing I I would add is that we've all, not all of us, some of us have been subject to our car breaking down in a parking lot and AAA has to come and we can tow it out of there, and it's, it's a one-off kind of 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 circumstance, and uh it sounds to me like the between perhaps picking the cars up that needs to be serviced at a customer's home and taking it directly from the customer's home to Westport for service. Um, and these other instances, or perhaps the customer would go in the car themselves directly to Westport, um, that 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 it reaches a level where I I don't think we have to be too concerned about about this.
But that's, that's where people bring their car now, Polestar now for service. But the amount of people that bring their car in for service versus the amount we pick up, it's, it's about happening.
I can't. It's very hard for me to do.
Right, Mr. Swirlo, go ahead and make your question.
Yeah, but my experience with Volvo is, and it obviates this whole thing, is that they pick up at your home and they drop back at your home. And uh unless you're going to the service department, which wouldn't be here, would, it would be in Westport or at any other Volvo dealership in the region. So I, it it seems to be a non-starter that people are uh flatbedding their cars in and out of this dealership unless the owners can correct me on that.
All right, thanks, I want one more.
Go ahead.
Um, although we don't have anything across from the Canaan transportation, we do have a Polestar dealer in the United States. And nobody brings their cars to the showroom for service. It I I, it happened once this year, it's a lot. They bring it to the Volvo dealership, which is ours also, and that's why it's here, or especially when they want a ride, they want their car picked up and dropped off.
So it's Commissioner. It's Commissioner Turner. I I think our concern is, uh what currently happens in town now is that when cars arrive at a dealership, and I realize this is not the same sort of thing, but it's very similar in some ways, that that big truck parks in the street. Um, this is a critical intersection, and it can't take that kind of blockage. What um, what assurances, what 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 are your plans for making sure that any deliveries that involve a large truck with cars on it that can pull into that parking lot without blocking everybody else and unloading? Can you share with us your plans for that?
Yes. Um, so you're you're the seven, the seven-car carrier that you're referring to, most cars come off would never come here because the cars on the carrier are not equipped. So they're not supposed to be driven. So it would be much more work for me to drop the cars here and then take my own truck and bring them to Westport and grab them, and then bring them back and forth, because it wouldn't make sense. So the car would never be dropped off here because they're not ready. So all cars, like that's what they do today, are dropped in Westport where they get serviced and prepped for delivery.
So when a a car changes in inside the showroom, what, how does that operation happen? Where where does that car come from? How does it get inside the building? What are there any traffic impacts?
So we talked about that, I can, I can address it again.
Go ahead.
Okay. So it's, we utilize our own two-car carrier pulled by a pickup truck. And that two-car carrier is how we bring the cars from Westport after they're prepared or serviced to New Canaan. Those, and that that trailer does fit in the parking lots. Behind the building because it's a two-car.
So I I I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for interrupting, but are you saying that this two-car carrier pulls into the parking lot? And unloads those cars? And then they drive around to the front of the building and go into the showroom. What happens when people are trying to get out? Um do I understand it correctly?
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure of your questions.
My my question is, you didn't, I I don't quite understand how that two-car carrier, how it circulates. You say it pulls into the parking lot?
Commissioner, we have a gentleman here who will introduce himself to my next year.
Uh my name is Dennis Patterson, he was on part of the social country. The situation that we understand, the service aspect is negligent, it means nothing is covered, anybody that will be there to service drop car. What you're talking about now is when we bring the car that's been prepped in West, Westport to bring it down here for sale, the show. Work like a two-car carrier, which is a little, it's a pickup truck, it drives in, it drops the two cars off. And that's going to happen intermittently at all times and it'll be always off hours. Once that car is dropped off, though, that track, that little trailer leaves, it's a pickup truck, two little trucks. Now they get the car inside the front of the showroom, that has to be done in four hours, we will agree to that in four hours because what we're gonna simply do is bring it around. Back it back into the showroom area, the showing the window, and that's it. If you're talking about a four-car showroom, we're not talking about a volume dealership with this tremendous volume. These these dealerships that are designed all over the country don't have volume. So this is the situation where the traffic, trailer you're thinking about, which is true, most jurisdictions make you do a C and R, that's how you can't unload on the street. You must only unload inside of your shop, traffic design. This is a parking lot that fits because we measured ourselves, we designed things to put that in the bridge, before the truck, the truck pulls in, the little trailer, they get off and he leaves. And again, the car coming to the front, you have to wait for traffic. And by the way, all you're talking about is driving out of the lot, back in the apartment, it's not a big, I'm not mitigating it, but it's not a big.
No, I appreciate that, sir. Um does the, does the truck, does the truck back into the parking lot? How, I'm trying to understand the impact to the traffic on the street.
Understood, it's understood. If you take the truck and you bring the truck and we do this. It's a pickup truck. It is not one of those trailers you're thinking.
I understand.
Pull in, there's plenty of room in there, there's plenty of room, you have a lot of empty slots, he's gonna pull in, he's gonna pull out when he's done. He'll make his right-hand turn or left-hand turn, what he's supposed to make, he'll go on his merry way.
Okay, sir, I'm I'm sorry, um. Does he pull in straightforward or does he back in?
Oh, that.
This all has an impact, this has an impact on the traffic on the street. And is there somebody, is there somebody that's gonna stop the traffic so that this truck can do this maneuvering?
Of course, you have, even when we do the cars on all these type of locations, they're not gonna just back the car without a flag and sitting a young man watching when they're pulling into the front, they're gonna have somebody doing that. This is a very professional operation, you don't do that that way. Coming out of that lot, there's somebody watching when the truck comes out, one of the salesmen always come out. Make sure there's no problems and leave the truck. This isn't that big of a truck, we're talking about not that big of a truck. We're talking about.
I I understand, I'm just trying to get down to the detail about what the potential impact is on that street. And thank you, you've explained, you've explained it to me, I better understand it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just summarize, I understand is that when uh vehicles are, it could be new vehicles, it could be maybe a repair that's dropped off, uncommon, but it may happen, okay. It will be on a two-car black bed trailer pulled by a uh pickup truck. That uh vehicle in the trailer will either head in or back into the parking lot behind the uh facility. The uh cargo will be unloaded. Uh so it it may be parked there or. Or it may be driven around the corner into the showroom, depending on the situation. And then the uh vehicle and the uh trailer will either back out or head out, depending on how it got in. And besides the driver, there will always be a second person there who will be dealing with traffic issues. And that's a fair summary of what could happen, sir.
Exactly correct. We do it all, we have to, we've got survival, you have to. You have to. Our insurance boys, you can't have anybody, those trailers coming out without.
So and the relative frequency of delivery of new cars would be, um how often?
Several times a month.
Define several.
Two, three.
Four, three times. So you're talking about three deliveries, three arrivals of a pickup truck with a trailer.
Because this, a month, it's not a volume type car, you're not selling four hundred, hundreds or three hundred. Chevy, it's not a lot of income.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Henry?
Not yet.
Listen, I hope so.
I had a hand with watches, I hope I can run through them a little bit, so thank you for the proposal, it's it's very helpful. So um you mentioned. Hours in terms of unloading vehicles, what are off hours to do?
Off hours to work will be in the late evening, very early morning.
They just, I mean, say you're arguing, late evening means afternoon.
Sixty-nine, often very early morning, six o'clock, seven o'clock.
Okay, that's helpful. Um and then um. With regard to showroom and the curb cut on Park Street, so I saw the twelve-foot curb cut and you're removing the. It's called a bay window with the copper to viable doors, I'm assuming, so the cars can go in and out. In the in the note that the attorney put together and said cars would go out no more often than three to four times a day. Which I thought was honestly kind of a high number for a showroom.
He's he's covering, he's covering a little bit.
Well.
Good guy. I've done car dealerships before, plenty of people learn, and we're gonna teach you, but the um. Yeah, no, it's not gonna be anything.
Okay, because I think what what I would.
It's got four, I'll be sure. If there's not that many every day, we're great, you know?
So my thought was, and I just want to make sure that we're on the same page here, if you have four cars in showroom, then you might have two um cars in the parking lot for test drives. And the car for test drives wouldn't be driven in at the showroom, so the cars would remain in the showroom and then the test drive cars would be in the parking lot.
And when the cars are showing their souls, we'll be able to actually make them change, okay?
Also. Day on, guarantee, it's checked by experts, every stitch, tag.
You're soft right now? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
Nobody on me. The cars, the test drive cars are never.
They're turning us down, Allison.
He was a, I was explaining why.
Okay. Okay, so I.
We wouldn't want a dirty car every time it gets dirty, that's great, the Westport, it leaves, it goes back in the showroom, it wouldn't make sense.
Okay, yeah, that that was my thinking, it just threw me off within the letter, three to four exits.
That's good job.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Um and then presumably those cars wouldn't be brought into the showroom overnight, you'd just keep them in the parking lot.
Exactly.
Um. So exterior bay windows removed for the black ones, and I understood it kind of industrial look looks. Very nice, like the the building that we have on Pine Street similarly.
He wanted to make things better.
And then I have two um things that I don't think we've talked about, we talked about signage, but I don't think we've talked about landscape design or lighting. And so from a landscape design perspective, I saw the external rendering um. Has essentially kind of a band of plantings around uh the perimeter there. Is there any further detail on a planting plan?
We would be more than happy to provide a landscape plan, should you plan for this. Layout your own pool of water, I don't get a separate board here.
No, it would be our team, but we we just like to see the. I I think I think if you could put, you know, non-contrarian plants out there, probably be.
No, we always comply with that, whatever any of these plans wants, we're very happy with that.
And there is a tree on the corner.
There's data.
That is gonna stay there, because I saw on the rendering, it wasn't there.
Yeah, my understanding is that when they do a rendering, they they want you to be able to see the entire building. But they are planning on keeping that tree with regard to a landscape plan, I talked to my client earlier. Seeming about that and what we'd like, if possible, is assuming the commission is willing to approve this, that the landscape plan has to be approved by the town planner. Um and go from and and do it that way.
Okay, well, it's great to hear you say you're gonna keep the tree and and the the remainder plants, there seem to be boxwoods and relatively small shrubs, so. I that's helpful, thank you. And my last question is on the lighting, so um. You know, we have a dark sky preference in the town.
We can, we will comply with, we know that through neighbors and experts, we will comply with all dark side.
Okay, dark sky, so.
We'll give you photometric, we'll give the D O B the photometrics and everything else and the layout and the dark side, the north before.
Okay, and then will the interior showroom be lit at night?
Yes, it'll be lighted, it'll be light, but again, we'll give that to D O B, show the photometrics, how the light is so it doesn't become obnoxious.
Right, it's gonna be helpful because I think, I mean, I've driven by the All Star um. Showroom in uh Tribeca, I think.
It's gonna hit some of the upper west sliders.
Oh, okay, maybe I'm thinking the one down by the Whitney, it's different.
I figured you were thinking of Rivian.
Oh, yeah, maybe it's Rivian, sorry, but it was it was at night, late at night, a little bit different um. Rivers, not very good, anyways, no, it could have been different, so you you'll go ahead and give us some details.
Total detail.
And then on the back parking lot, you're not gonna change lighting or what is?
Yeah, we're gonna change lighting, we're gonna make it more modern LED, but also we're gonna continue the dark side because the way they're in the back.
So is that lighting plan in your, in your package?
Will not be, of course, with D O B, what we're gonna do is, once we know we're okay here, we then put together with the photogram, photometrics, the landscape architecture. And we go to D O B and we comply with the code, and they show them and you can take a look at it, be lucky if anyone who goes.
Were you referring to this D O B as the building department?
Yeah, I'm sure.
We can call it a little bit right here.
Clarification, because this is a site plan, typically don't require lighting plans, that's.
Yes, D O B, D O Bs, the building department's not gonna care about the photometrics and the light plan, um that's gonna have to come to us.
Okay.
But I mean, that goes broader to planning and zoning in the building department also.
Yeah, so, like I said, I think that you'll be, I'll give that to you.
So the reason I'm raising lighting is I think it could make a big difference um in how you achieve the light of the facility. Um it tends to be if you're here at night, um the town has a relatively low heat feeling, like kids walking around at night with their ice cream cones, I think having a. A glaring, and I'm not saying that this is what you pursue, um but having, you know, high intensity lights and and things that kind of. Create a lot of glare.
We agree, many of these parties have, we have those many of us.
And the All Star look, if for lack of a better word, at night is a pretty dim, pretty dim showroom, at the distant, distant car highway.
Okay, well, thanks, Terry, thanks for being that concerned. Um those are my, those are my questions, the lighting and the landscape, thank you.
Commissioner Cruz, I have two questions. Um I think uh Mr. Finn is aware of some of the landscape sensitivities in this commission, so I won't bore him with it, but um. The current landscaping is a kind of blah, I will say.
It's not.
It's why it exists, it's a blah, put it that way, um something a little uh fresher. With uh some color, uh something native and pollinator friendly, might be a nice gesture. I would also make the observation the applicant that regarding drop off of new vehicles. You are by a railway, railway depot and if you are blocking traffic at seven in the morning when people are trying to get to the train, it can create a certain level of drama.
No, we will try.
You may want to avoid.
No, we will.
Um I'm just saying they can get anxious and could drive around you when it's opposed to, I'm just saying. Nine o'clock might be a better choice, so I'll leave it at that.
Agreed, agreed.
By the way, we don't, we don't want to have our guys miss through the stock finishers when.
Morning commute by railways, different situation, so.
Um Planner Gary, did I hear you correctly in that the town engineer has still to weigh in on the new curb cut, is that correct?
So it's not that she hasn't weighed in there, awaiting, um I'm trying to get site line.
Yeah, uh, yes, Mister Chairman Raven, I I've been in uh touch with Maria Copeland as recently as this afternoon, and we've been exchanging information. And uh we have to have a little bit more discussion, but I am optimistic that we're gonna work that issue out to her satisfaction. And as I mentioned, we're happy, happy to make, uh it's the commission, we're to approve this to make it clear that, you know, we need a certificate of occupancy and sign up for building and engineering. With regard to the entire project.
I did also speak to Maria this afternoon and they um. They're open to the curb cut, they just need more information, but there wasn't anything in particular that made them feel that they were immediately going to deny, so it was.
I guess to build up, uh my question was, do we think that this, that engineering could request the curb cut to move it all, in which case the site plan would change? For we think it's either a a yes or a no.
So from what I've heard, the only consideration is to maybe require that it's right turns only into the. Um showroom and only right turns out, and that was something that they would be considering.
As long as we agree that it's actually a part of the garden, uh sheriff's carrier also. Exactly, and center, most of the stuff.
Perhaps, perhaps he's missed the more direct answer is that Maria, Ms. Copeland does have site uh distance information now and that. In my further discussions with her, that does not seem to be, and she seemed to be okay with that.
Okay, okay, so we're not, we're not negotiating moving it, it's gonna stay in allocated.
There are discussions about that, and I don't think that we're gonna have to move it, and we did, obviously, we'd have to come back.
Sorry, I I just forgot one other question, that was just um your. I'm a car enthusiast, so I like, I like these All Stars, they're an interesting car, um but I did want to ask you because I know it will come up within our. Town questioning in terms of like a test drive procedure, and I know these cars have lots of power and, you know. Do you have a typical route, like when you have your. Have you spoke to that?
We do, I mean, the first dealership in Manhattan, so we definitely are more test driver house. Like very well, very, um also, uh we get a discount on insurance when we have test drive routes. Um so as far as the companies, the uh uh clients on a test drive. Let's maybe, plus we're giving the car out early in the night.
And then, okay, and then, so you'll basically find the test drive route that's, you know, maybe it's right, 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 for example, um. And you'll kind of designate that as your test drive route and maybe the police department, police department finds an issue or something or other, maybe adjusted a little bit.
Absolutely, it's also makes it easier to sell a car if the if the sales representative swears the route. Because they they they, I can't, you know, speak over and over again, they're they're concentrated, I'm fine in asking about. Where did I go, I should say.
Okay, oh, thank you for that, sure.
Okay, Commissioner, more, more questions?
Been saying all the right things and I am, this is gonna be beautiful and it's gonna be, you know, good for the town, but. But my words, I I worry that, I'm sure that if we went back far enough that that uh Carl Chevrolet was saying all the same things. Said, you know, that there wouldn't be any car carriers and that wouldn't be that intensive use. I think that you're going to be more successful than you're describing to us tonight, that there's going to be an intense use. We already have, which should be a modest little car repair business, two hu- two hundred yards away. And it is an intense use of Pine Street. They are constantly, it is a full-time job for that business to move cars and occupy all the parking spots in the neighborhood. That's what happens when a business like New Haven Car gets successful. Uh Carl Chevrolet has gotten so successful that they've outgrown their current, you know, their their facility and taken over, you know, the adjacent properties. And so I get it, in twenty twenty-three, this is gonna have four little cars and there's just gonna be two test driving vehicles in your fifteen-car parking lot. And and all the real work is gonna get done in Westport. But there's no way that we can stop you and say, don't, don't be any more successful than that, you know, just two cars. Because this thing could grow and I think that uh Chairman is right, or I I think it was the chairman who pointed out, this is one of the busiest intersections. In all of town and the fact that you're right across the street from a train station invites. Uh a tremendous amount of customers from both places to say, I'm gonna drop my car off in New Haven and jump on the train and head into the city and you're gonna be moving cars.
Well, we can limit, uh we can condition and limit uh what they can do and I I think that they said they're gonna use. Well, we can limit, uh, we can condition and limit uh what they can do, and I, I think that they said they're gonna use no. Deliver with no more than two cars, and so that'll be part of.
And uh, you know, if life changes and we're selling a hundred cars a day, they won't be operating in this location.
Thank you.
Maybe I can all sort of pledge your, your contribution a little bit, and that if you can't park cars, it is a repair business. They're buying, they're, they're buying this to repair as many cars as possible, this is. We deliberately said, we're not doing any repairs here, this is just a showroom purchasing car. I think you mentioned earlier tonight, as we deal with your phone Greenwich Avenue, very, very popular car. Uh, frankly, I think that, I think they closed that store down because they were running into, they, they wanted to do more online sales. So I don't want to represent if they still operate, but when they did operate, I don't think this was, this was an issue. And I think there is a distinction between this kind of dealership, the Canaan Farm Cars, the Carl Chevrolet. Every business owner hopes they're successful, but I think the site itself is limiting, site itself is limited here. And I think the business model for this Paul Star dealership is significantly different than many, many other cars, just the fact that. Cars are gonna be delivered to customers of their homes, cars that need to be repaired are gonna be picked up. I think that.
More like Tesla on Greenwich Avenue than any of the other examples I've cited.
Exactly, thank you.
Cause I, I, I reached a Tesla, and you're right, I never went to Greenwich Avenue after seeing it there for the first time. I had to go to White Plains, you know, after that.
That's same month, over the same month, same country.
Well, I'm not familiar with, with the exact uh service volume of Carl Chevrolet, I can tell you how many Chevrolet dealerships. Probably twice with forty repairers a day, which means forty cars a day coming into your service. Um, and in Western. But uh, that, that, that does look fair, this, it's no barrier on this slide.
And, and the other point that was made was like, I do know that, I, I do remember in early days of the Hummer dealership in town. That he lit, uh, he lit the interior at night, and this commission said. Can't do that, and then the Commerce Bank, which also came up uh, uh, in its early days as a bank. And uh was lit at night, and this commission had to say, you can't light up, you can't be a lit sign. You can't effectively become a lit sign by lighting up your interior at night, so I just wanna caution you on that. You said all the right things, you said low, low intensity lighting, but it, it is something that we don't get violated here a lot.
We have, I mean, our existing Paul Star dealership, it's gonna happen, it's, it's in the Upper West Side. And the residential area, heavy residential. Uh, West Street is the fire department, and very low light, because that's, I mean, that's happened, I mean. Luckily, it's also a Paul Star recommendation, so it fits all, all the regulations.
Word on that, um, please, Com- Commissioner Swirtler. So the just statistics from what I'm reading here s- uh state roughly that the uh. Paul Star is dou- doubling its capacity every year. And it's, it's quite obvious from this site that you can't do that on this site if you were following a traditional automobile sales and repair. Model. So I think the site itself, the building itself, its limitations would be telling me personally more about. What you're gonna be doing there than uh than looking at a Chevrolet dealership or Ford dealership. So I don't really have the, the worries about it that some of my colleagues made. I do agree that um. When a, a vehicle is delivered to this busy intersection, that's gonna have to be very well thought out and done at an off time. So that it doesn't affect traffic in town, but otherwise, I think what I've seen so far, in terms of how you're respecting the building. And adaptively reusing it properly, and basically most of the other comments you've made today are, are correct and true. It will be a more positive for the town and negative. Uh, one correction, actually, the Polestar, uh, the Polestar um sign in the window is a logo. Because it's Polestar's logo, so I don't know what the um, the rules and regulations specifically would state about that. I don't have a problem with it, but in terms of the rules, um, Sarah, this may be breaking those rules.
No, it, it would be confined, you know, we run into that issue with Dunkin' Donuts, because their logo is just Dunkin' Donuts. Um, so I mean, if, if it's just black letters and that happens to be their logo, whether it is or isn't, we. We can't restrict it that, that intensely.
Polestar, Polestar.
Guys suggest that, I think it's a beautiful logo, it's simple, I think it's white. But uh, we do have to follow those regulations in town.
I think it just, it just means it's, uh, Polestar can't use that star icon as part of their.
That's, that's. Which, um, at the moment, no one knows what that is, just like the boss or all.
All right, Commissioners, do, we've had a long conversation about this, um, do we think we can make a decision on this one tonight?
I'm good to go.
Okay, and do we want to run any potential conditions by the applicant before we start taking motions?
I think, uh, Mr. Cruz obviously suggests the um comments from Miss Carrie regarding approval from the town uh engineer for the curb cut. Would certainly lead to a condition.
I would suggest that the uh. That the condition that any cars delivered to the dealership. Whether for in connection with repairs or new cars. Uh, or used cars that are being sold would have to be, uh, you know, vehicle that contains. Uh, contains no more than uh two cars.
It's only a temporary.
And uh, and furthermore, that uh, uh. The uh delivery of cars would have to be after seven P M before five A M.
Did you mean before five A M?
Between seven P M and five A M. Because people were suggesting that um, seven A M is.
No, I, I, I'm only thinking that the six A M might be reasonable.
I know that is so not.
I, I, if I can, if I can jump in for one second, I, I, I don't think we should. Confin them to that type of window, I think it's better putting a restriction on the delivery of vehicles. Not happening during rush hour, for example, four P M till eight P M, and six A M to nine A M. Those two windows are where deliveries shouldn't happen.
Okay, why did we say rush one of us for?
But um, it's Commissioner Turner, um, Chairman Radman, I, you know, I agree with what you're saying. However, uh, when you consider the uses that are next door to this property, um, Saint Aloysius. And uh C V S, um.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that those times work or um. Uh, won't have an impact on their operations and their customers.
Yeah.
Mr. Commissioner Cruz, my suggestion would be that it would need to be after nine, you're not gonna have. Commutation issues, I don't think we have other traffic issues from neighboring uh retail establishments. Uh, it's, it's a quiet time, and. P M, the morning I would avoid period, it's just not, you don't wanna be there at train station, rush hour, bad idea.
Just as a reminder, enforcement of this is a bit difficult, no one is here at nine P M at night. And uh, so if someone did that, you know, it would have already happened. You know, it would have already happened, and there's no.
I, I, I under, I would understand, but you know, if we see someone delivering a car at. You know, eight in the morning when people are trying to get to the train, someone's gonna notice, it's gonna get commented on. We have a conversation with the applicant and say, don't do that.
You know, look, I, I, look, I, I hear what the commission's saying, it, it does seem a little harsh to me for a couple of reasons. Number one, the frequency is gonna be very, very rare, as we've already heard, and two, with all respect. This is a site plan application, the use of this property for a car dealership is permitted as a right. And we have already reduced the scope of, of, of what a car dealership could be in this zone. Because we're not having, and we're not, we're selling a fraction of used cars, and there's no repair shop. It's repairs, people coming with their cars daily, they have their cars repaired, and I really think the commission should be concerned about it. I think bringing cars once a week, twice a week, once a month, please, I mean. I, I, I think the commission, with all respect, is handcuffing my client a little bit here. He's gonna have to have employees delivering cars at nine P M at night, it, it just seems a little, a little. Over the top to me, and I.
Well, we, we were just picking up what you had said, when you, you were asking to find off hours. And it was suggested that at nine P M, or early in the morning, and then there was objection to the early in the morning, so I, and my. And my suggestion was just, I think what you said was your intent, and make it part of the approval.
Well, I, I think, I think my client's okay if he gets the morning and the evening, or maybe, look. Find something that you're fine with, just let him know, just be like.
The Chairman, the Chairman suggested two blackout windows, which are both rush hour. He suggested six to ten in the morning, don't deliver during six to ten, gives you a window from ten to four. Because the second window is four P M to eight P M, which is the evening rush hour. That's not too much of.
Okay, great, anything else, except Commissioners, before we begin to go then?
We also have a condition on landscape.
Do you, what are you thinking?
Um, on the uh, just subject to staff approval on landscape design and lighting design.
Okay, so land, the lighting plan to be approved by staff? All right, um, do you have any motions?
I move that we approve subject to the conditions in outline number one, that there, there would be uh. Uh, any car being delivered to the uh, uh, location would be uh delivered with uh. A vehicle that would carry a maximum of two cars. Uh, and the delivery could not be done during the rush hour, which is defined as uh. Six A M to ten A M, sorry, nine, to six A M to nine A M, or uh, uh, four P M to eight, eight P M. Uh, and uh, secondly. Uh, what was it?
The kind of, you can ask me for the curb cut.
Yeah, and you wanna recite your uh.
Yeah, sorry, I, I thought I said it, but just uh landscape and lighting uh designs, subject to staff approval.
So that is the motion, do we have a second?
I'll second Commissioner Cruz.
Okay, um, any further discussion, or can we really go vote? Go ahead and vote, Mister Radman?
I vote yes.
Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Chris?
Yes.
Mister Cassavant?
Yes.
Mister Engel?
Yes.
Mister Herring?
Yes.
Mister Knai?
Yes.
Mister Swarda?
Yes.
And I, Ms. Nielsen also vote yes. We are approved.
Thank you very much, thank you. By the way, uh, we, we were having a little trouble pronouncing the name of the law firm. And uh, I just wanted to point out that the Loski Rosen firm is a, a very uh epic firm in this area. And in particular, uh, what I remember was they represented Jackie Robinson when he was trying to drive. There was a time, if you couldn't, if you were a black person, you didn't have Jackie Robinson, you couldn't buy it, and therefore the Loski Rosen changed there, so. Uh, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a well-known and historically uh ca- capable firm.
All right, Commissioners, moving on to item nine on our agenda, which is deliberation of any possible. Commissioners? I think we just have a couple things we need to finish up here, and then we'll be free. Um, we're gonna move on to uh, item nine, which is deliberation and any possible action on a closed. Public hearing item, and I believe we have two of those, the first is nineteen Olmstead Court. Which, as you recall, is the Dean Patch garage, she's getting a car. Within front yard. Um, so do we have a motion, or do we wanna have a little confirmation on that?
Little surprised that it didn't use all of this coverage and ask for a two-car garage. Typically, we have to ask them to, you know, uh, restrict their ambitions, but in this case, it's asked for. Uh, you know, a, a rather modest, uh, it's not two stories high, and it's not two, two cars wide. So um, the fact that it's in the front yard and setback. Um, you know, it gives you pause, but then you look and you say which neighbors are affected, and it's two condom complexes. So I think the impact on neighbors, uh, is, is minimal. I would, I would agree with that, I just to build on that, I think, you know, there is, because of the way the lot is shaped, um. In terms of the way it's um, side direct setbacks, this is almost the least um impinging in terms. If it were actually to go behind the plane in the front of the house, it would actually be much more um. Offensive, I guess, in terms of the setback, uh, guidelines that were, we've given, as the way I see it. Because it's against that back wall versus against the side. I asked about a whole lot, he said it's on the plan, it's true, there's two little. Scans is represented by two wooden rectangles, I, I can't really tell what, what the lighting is gonna be. I know that people have put garage lights and, and angered the neighbors, you know, in front of this cushion in the past. So I, I don't know whether we need more detail on that, but. We're wanting that, you know, a condition that, what do you call it, blackout lights or.
I mean, we do have pretty specific light regulations, so I do think, well, dark skies is important, and in the future, we may wanna look at. Only incorporating it into the zoning right now, because I do think it is a bit redundant, especially on small residential applications like this.
I mean, I wouldn't care so much about lights if it wasn't in the front yard, so when you approve a garage in the front yard. It, that can be seen by your neighbors at the end of the public side, then we have to show some sensitivity about the light.
Make a motion, I move to approve provision that uh the, there would be only three lights on it. Which is said what they want, these three lights, and they said there would be dark sky compliant, so we'll take them at their word. And we require there to be dark sky compliant, which the applicant said they're gonna do anyway. So I see this as easy. I don't see, I see this as a fairly modest garage, it seems to be pretty well placed in the property, the design seems to be very consistent with the neighborhood.
Um, would you be willing to add that we need a drainage report that must be submitted?
Yes, please, yes, uh, the, it would be conditioned upon a uh positive reception of the drainage report.
Would anyone like to second that motion with your condition? Um, let's move to a vote, Mister Adman? Uh, Mister Adman, you're muted.
Yes.
I read your lips, I knew it was a yes. All right, Mister Turner?
Yes.
Mister Chris?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Cassavant, you're refused on this application, uh, Mister Engel?
Yeah.
Mister Harry?
Yes.
Mister Knai?
Yes.
Mister Swarda?
Yes.
And Ms. Nielsen, I have to vote yes. All right, the next decision we need to make is on one thirteen Hemlock Hill Road. Um, this is approving the modification to allow a car lift to add two additional parking spaces in the basement of the residence. Um, do we have any conversation or ready to move to motion?
I think I would just like to make a comment about the regulation, I think, you know, the, the five Rs. Or parking for five cars goes back quite a while, even predates the two thousand and seven, probably goes back to the nineteen nineties. Regulations, when. When this type of density inside of a garage was. Not that it wasn't contemplated, but. You know, lifts were not prevalent, people weren't building basements to house their vehicles. The regulation, I believe, the intent of it was to mitigate. And control the, the level of development of garage fronts on a piece of property, on a residential property. So you didn't have. A residence with ten garage bays, which would obviously look out of place. And there are some properties in town that have five garage bays, some that had four, many have three, et cetera. Um, so I think that was the intent of the regulation, um. Moving forward, I think with this application and even further applications after this, I think it's going to be hard to try and. Tell people what they can do inside their garage. We can, we can. Agree on how many garage fronts. Um, you know, other zoning criteria that involve us, but. To try and control how people use the inside of their dwelling, whether it be the garage or anything else. Is not our purview. So we, we just have to be careful of. What we're approving and what limitations we're putting on a particular applicant on this.
Thank you. Are you raising your hand or?
Well, I think the one other intent, um. Chairman Adman was that perhaps we wouldn't want businesses or other sort of, um.
Yeah.
Other sort of, let's say, high intensity car uses, I think it. And I think that was one part of the intent of the. Of the reg, as I understood it, that that was one concern we had, I think, at that large. Development along Northwood, that somebody would be running some sort of business or some sort of like high intensity. And I think it's different when you have a single homeowner that happens to have a lot of the. Cars on three lifts that they may use one at a time, not necessarily in recent car trips, it's just. The variety of cars that they may use to do it.
Correct, agreed.
It would just be helpful also from a staff perspective, because, um, the applicant that. My mind always goes through is last year's approval of sixty-two Lone Tree Farm, where it was. A very small, one-bedroom apartment and then a very large garage, and in that case. I believe you conditioned no car lifts, and then also there was a full drive-in basement. And, you know, in theory, they could have stored a, I don't know, it was like twenty-something cars total, like. Ten on each floor, and I think that you put restrictions there, so that's. That's where this got looped into it, so. If you all are saying that you shouldn't be doing that in the future, that's finding some clarification on. Where we move from here is.
I think that's one to put on the list for the regulation amendments in the future.
Okay.
I, I think there's a, actually a very important, um. Uh, issue when it comes to that, because. These car lifts. And will at some point accommodate a whole basement full of cars, as, as somebody was just saying, or a number of people were just saying. I could, I could envision ten, fifteen, twenty cars in the basement if it's large enough. So while that doesn't impact us on the surface at first. Moving those cars in and out of the basement will. And, and when and how they're parked in the driveway to get in there, in or out, will impact the community. So they're, they're going forward, there has to be some thought about this. Because in this case, I don't think it matters, but in future cases, it may.
In, in both cases, Lone Tree Farm and this one, the applicant said, well, I've got a double lot. And so it is a far less intense abuse when you consider that I've got a double lot. Um, I don't know if that, that, that means that you should get a free pass, I'm, I'm, uh, instead of building a house, I'm gonna build. A house-sized garage, but if that's what we want to keep improving, then, you know, we should do it consciously. We should do it consistently.
Because, again, and I. This isn't necessarily about the application, but. That, that basement is, I don't know, four thousand square, maybe six thousand, I, I. I don't know, it's how many, but it, this is a huge house, huge basement. You could refigure that in theory and fit more cars, so in the future, if we got some sort of interior application. Where they completely reworked their basement for, to be able to fit however many cars. Is that an issue for the commissioner, or does it matter?
We said while they were here that that was going to be a, that we were going to hold them to what they asked for.
That was the specificity of what I said, because the governing feature here is in fact unlimited vehicles on site. And in fact, if you'll recall, and you guys may not recall the Lone Tree Farm discussion, but we were also quite specifically there about. Not bifurcating dual property. And, and every, you know, not getting, not saying we got a double lot, we can build this, and then we'll just sell the second lot off after we're done. So I think we have protection already by virtue of the limit on the property. And I think we need to have serious conversation. It's ironic that we had a discussion about sprinkling. Here, when in fact, we dealt with. Frank barely required, it's a sprinkling requirement there, but, you know, I mean, the, the, you know, the. Homeowner himself, in this case, may have created potential fires, but it's a risk, it's limited to them. And, uh, as opposed to an apartment building or another structure, I think that's.
It was a fifteen, twenty million dollar problem in the area, and that's why I brought it up, the. I don't think that the building codes I've caught up with was starting to get built in the area, and it came in Westport in the Greenwich. And I'm worried about it, but it's not our lane, it's actually staying out of, you know, gotta stay in my lane.
Good point.
But I wanted to get it on the record that just because, you know, the building code says it's okay, doesn't mean that. You know, you have, and, and, and you brought up the fact that, that, that. We want to get it on the record that elevators, whether or not the state approves it, we want to make sure that. That you looked into. Like, maybe for residents, than they.
What are we concerned about, I mean, I, I guess I, I'm curious, because are we concerned about the number of internal combustion engines that reside on our property? Are we concerned about the intensity of use?
Is the rule on my, one ninety-nine Elm Street, that because the cars actually park, uh, un- under, like, you. Yeah, that's a building had to get sprinkled, and that was a rule in nineteen eighty. That was a rule in nineteen eighty, and I have a dry, uh, hydro, a dry hydrant system throughout all the, because of the proximity of cars. So if we determined way back in the seventies, eighties, that proximity of cars have to be treated differently. Why aren't we doing it in, in these intense uses in our homes?
So it's a localized issue, that's only happening in this area and probably a few other pockets of the country.
Great. To answer your question, I think it's both what Mr. Adman said, I think. In terms of why we have the regulation, I think it's a concern for aesthetics in terms of what the exterior of these buildings look like, you know, if we are having a. Huge garage barn with no house attached to it. And then I think it's also an issue of intensity of use that, um, was also brought up here tonight, um, you know, you could, it could look fine from the outside, but to someone's point, if you're. Moving twenty cars in and out of a garage today, so it looks like a three-car garage, but it's gonna have a lot more activity. And, you know, again, on an oversized lot and you're two of your own, maybe not as much of an impact. Obviously, in our smaller, smaller zoning districts, it would have a huge impact on the neighbors.
And Stanford, I happen to know, quite recently reacted very negatively to. A similar proposal on the old Watson IBM property, which. Is now just a residential subdivision where somebody wanted to do that. I think there are a whole bunch of reasons, but again, the governing rule here is the number of cars per lot. And we, I, I think we need to be thoughtful about being too easy on. Violating a sensible rule. I mean, I think even this one, I just, I did not say this during a public hearing, but. You know, we've got very well-trained architects. Who should have known this basic rule to begin. So we have yet another example of an app that's coming in for something that's already built. That, in this case, the neighbor, yeah, and the neighbor was not at all happy with the, I mean, with all the discussions we had on this before. Uh, I mean, I, I don't think we're being played here, but all of a sudden. You know, we've got people saying it's already built, we have this lift that was imported from Germany, that's dropped in by a crane. By the way, what are you gonna do about it? You know?
But I think, I mean, I, I totally hear you on that, and, but I do think it's, it's gonna be hard to regulate. Anything less than, say, ten, because.
No, it's not, because there's a limit of five.
So I would say it's, it's involved, this is how most enforcement goes, we, we set a number. They operate as they do, and then in the future, when they try to make any changes to the property, that's. When we find it, and that's, that's when it gets enforced, and if we get complaints, then obviously it needs to be enforced, and in the meantime, it is unfortunately a bit of an on-your-own-our system, but. It works ninety.
I'm not ten, um, with, um, you had eight, and only because they have a lift.
So, I mean, that's, that's fine for you. I don't want to sign me a good conversation, but I also want to be mindful that it's ten, twenty-five, and we're not probably changing this regulation tonight, so. Um, could we move ahead with a motion?
So it's the condition that eight cars, and you had a condition about, um, uh, that all licenses and, uh. Uh, which will run to the elevator itself, we, we applied with.
Well, they, 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 they're applications of the cars, so you don't have to run them.
You wanted it to be explicit, you wanted it to be explicit.
No, no, I think we, I think we.
All we, all we have to say as a condition. Is that their application will need to be reviewed by the building department to be fully code compliant. For everything, including the car lift. And then it's really, it's really on the onus of the building department to take over from there. Whether they're gonna require an elevator inspection or not, I don't know if they do or not. Uh, for car lifts. Um, this one's a little unique, you know, the, the car lifts that you see in a, in a repair garage that are on a slab and just go up and down. Those do not require any kind of an inspection by a governmental agency. But this one's different in that it's an actual floor slab going up and down between levels. So it might be interpreted differently. But again, that's for something, that's something for the building department to determine. What's required.
Yeah.
Not a.
Agreed.
Because he's got six thousand square feet, and he could potentially add more, but he said to us, and. Ruchi said to us, he's happy to be limited to eight, so let's, I would like that to be the condition.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone want to make this motion?
I'll make the motion to approve subject to the, um, condition that Mr. Adman said with regard to. Uh, adhering to all, uh, regulations and codes and, uh. The, the second condition that it be limited to eight cars.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, I got Mr. Knai. Um, yeah, with Gasko, all right, let's call this to a vote, Mr. Adman?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Yes.
Mr. Knai?
Yes.
Mr. Swardlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Nielsen, I also vote yes. Okay, um, that brings us to item ten on the agenda, which is administrative actions or other matters that may come before the commission. Sarah, do you want to start with the grease farms that we added?
Sure, so it is approval for their winter. Sport court or basketball court schedule, um, it is the same as the fall schedule that was approved with the addition of one, um. Group, um, also having the courts one day a week for. Short amount of time, it's no more intensive than any other court approval you all have in the past.
I move we approve it.
All right.
Second.
All right, and let's take that to a vote, Mr. Adman? Oh, you're, you're muted again.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Yeah.
Mr. Knai?
Yes.
Mr. Swardlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Nielsen, I also vote yes. All right, um, approval of the twenty twenty-four meeting calendar?
So that was, that should have been mailed out to you all with the agenda, um. I think I know comments, I will just make a note that, um, this. Schedule has already been sent to the, um, first selectmen's admin for scheduling purposes, and if. I find out that, um, we're leaving off to the, this room for one of the meetings, I'll come back with a proposed revised schedule, so you don't have to. Operate like this for any meetings next year.
Okay, and I, I did look at it, but off the top of my head, the meetings all start at seven.
Correct, all at seven, and most, most months, um, you know, last Tuesday, I'm, I was currently.
Was that, I didn't see it, oh, no.
Um, it's also posted online, I'm happy to share my screen from this one, but, um. It's under administrative actions on the, you know, the, um, community commission applications by twenty-three.
Oh, they're wrong about saying, actually, not on that, you know, gotcha.
We, we would take a vote on this. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion to approve the calendar?
I move.
All right, Mr. Chris, seconded.
Second.
Knai, um, Mr. Adman, how do you vote?
Vote yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Chris?
Yes.
Mr. Cassavant?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Harry?
Hi, it's.
Mr. Knai?
Yes.
Mr. Swardlo?
Yes.
And Ms. Nielsen, I also vote yes. Um. Mr. Chris, do you want to give an update on the P O C D process in the commission?
We had a meeting, uh, yesterday evening, um. It was focused on cultural, historical, and environmental issues, um, there was minimal commentary on. Cultural and historic issues, there was some information submitted through email. Uh, significant and active discussion on environmental issues, lasted about two hours, I thought it was a very productive meeting. It's an input from a wide range of people in town, that was some very practical ideas, um, I thought it was a very useful session. Uh, we're having another session on the twenty-eighth of this month. On, uh. Educational and, this is public school and municipal infrastructure, so. Sidewalks, sewers, telecom, et cetera, utilities will be discussed there. And then fourteen, it's the fourteenth of December, housing in the downtown, which would be in. Active meeting as well. But I think the level of engagement is very good, we had our, uh, sort of kickoff with the, um. Survey in late October. And, uh, that was about a hundred people showed up.
The workshop room?
Sorry, yeah, the workshop, the eleven, and, uh, very engaged people, um. Often, I, I've heard from S L R, our consultants, that sometimes ten people show up. Uh, so we're at a high level, and to repeat, we had over eleven percent of the town. Fill out the survey, they see four as a big win, often it's two or three percent, so. Way higher, so the level of engagement has been quite high, so I'm very pleased with that, so I'm expecting more. And.
We expect great things from you.
We are expecting great things too.
It's still the brownies.
But, yeah, the brownies are good too, the old caterer, but, um. Uh, we seem to be on schedule, they seem to be moving along well, um. We'll be hearing more from S L R, and starting seeing some chapters probably February, January, February.
Yes, I've, I've seen a few chapters, they're just. Waiting a little bit longer to throw a log at you guys.
The meeting of the fourteenth, I don't know where it will be.
All right.
Some meetings.
For these, they're all gonna be here, uh, maybe, you know, maybe, uh.
And you are welcome to speak as, if, if you have any input, you are welcome to speak as private citizens, um.
Everyone's welcome.
As non-subcommittee members, um, you know, to like a public hearing, I don't, you don't have the same restrictions that we do. For other ones.
Question for you, Sarah, is I, I did get an email from, uh, one of the commission members to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Where are all of those assets being stored?
Sure, so if someone has comments, they're, we're posting them on the website, on the twenty twenty-four P O C D update page, we have like a little tab, the same way we have them for applicants, such as. Something like community comments, or just.
So on the town website, not on S L R's?
No, we're just doing that on the town website, and then we also. We also have like an internal file system where we have it in case there are comments that shouldn't be posted on the website, or something.
And just to also confirm, I had a question, if people aren't able to attend the meetings, but they still want comment, they email directly to you?
Uh, the door is open for electronic submissions from anyone at any time on any topic they make as relevant to this process.
So if someone gets anything, just forward it to me and we'll handle the rest.
So the community. Participation updates, that's where those comments are stored.
The community participation updates, that's, um, I think those are the reports from S L R about. The like survey results, the, um, community workshop report, it's called community feedback, that's where the lawyers are.
Okay, so like the P O C D recommendations, eleven thirteen, is your consolidated notes from that meeting?
No, those are comments from. Members of the public.
So.
The, what, what did you like?
Where are the notes, like, for all the people that spoke at that meeting? Who's, who's the secretary, who's scriving those?
So it's a mix of Krista and I, and then we're sending it to S L R. And it will be posted on the community dialogue meeting materials, the. File there is what was presented at the meeting yesterday, it will be updated until that one. Posted there, and my mother's sending it to S L R.
Actually, so I apologize, I just didn't understand how it all came together, so I don't want to. Not waste you.
No, I didn't even know we had that. I did this like five days ago and didn't tell anyone, so.
I do have to, I do have to make an observation from last night, um, we did have a fairly robust turnout. Um, but we had three topics on the docket, and historical preservation was the first. And there were zero comments. There was not a single person in the audience who. Got up to speak about historical preservation, and after. The various applications that we've gone through in this town between the library and. Vine Cottage and the Red Cross Building and the old St. Ace Building. I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of disappointed in the. The people, I know they sent in a letter. To to just state their position, but kind of disappointed that people from the Preservation Alliance and the Historical Society and. Whomever else in town didn't show up and start, you know, pounding on the podium.
Yeah, uh. Chairman Redmond, Commissioner Chris, uh, I agree with you, I was gonna say shocked, we didn't like that commentary. I saw members of the, uh, Preservation Alliance who are on Zoom. And I started waiting for them to speak, and they didn't.
Yeah.
And as you, as you recall, uh, I brought up the topic towards the end and said, okay, let's open it up again, does anyone want to speak on this topic? And no one did.
Yep.
We gave an ample opportunity. Throughout the meeting, and. There were some from, uh, towards the end, Keith sentence spoke at the end a little bit on this, but that was about it. It was a lot quieter than I would have imagined, but. It was well noticed and we asked and they didn't do it.
My impression is that the, um, you know, stakeholders in town who. Are particularly interested in historic preservation, they, they all submitted letters to me the day yesterday, and. I guess they felt that. Sending letters was more impactful than speaking at the meeting, they were there, they had the.
Those letters are on the website.
Yes. So. It's, it might be disappointing that they didn't feel the need to speak, but. I think they feel that their. Opinion was expressed.
I would, I'd be pleased though with the level of interaction on environmental issues, that was very. Friendly, robust, useful discussion.
I I ran, I ran out and bought an electric leaf blower this morning.
Okay.
Before we outlaw. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I bought the electric one.
Electric one, yeah, just get some extra batteries just in case.
Get a rake, get a rake, yeah, human power.
Can continue rip raping chili of lithium, yep, I'm I'm all there.
I I thought it was also interesting that that people did offer some pretty creative solutions, like, I think one person said, um, for the. I'm thinking of the gas power leaf blower, someone said we could have. A central, um, I'm not sure how viable this is, but a central charging station, I think someone said, which I thought was at least an interesting creative idea, and someone said. The town could act, offer some sort of rebate for, you know, the independent landscapers to trade in their gas power for electric. I'm not saying that all these need to be viable, I'm just saying that it was interesting to see people put that forth and to see. You know, the first selectmen, current first selectmen, and the future first selectmen in the room. And them talking about the transfer tax to give the space. And that sort of mechanism for implementation.
There's also, I thought, a useful conversation on trees in town and the beach trees and ash trees that are dying. And the cost and the need to cut these down for safety reasons and to replace them. And, um, sort of where to generate funds for tree replacements. Um, also issues on, um, capacity at the transfer station for composting and so on, was a very useful discussion, so. You know, a lot of good stuff to think about there, so. There was good interaction, people came prepared, they're engaged, which is what we were hoping for.
Alright.
We'll put that in the wind column.
Um, so last item on the agenda, number eleven, approval of the minutes from the October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Anyone have any changes to the minutes? Okay, seeing as not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Um, you could just do all in favor.
Okay, since everyone in favor of approving the minutes, I don't have to read everyone's name.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, this meeting is adjourned.
Well done, Mr. M.
Thank you.